We're going to reconvene into open session from closed session. And City Attorney Barrow, you have a comment.
Yes, Mayor, earlier this evening, the City Council went into closed session to discuss two pieces of litigation, both of which are identified on the agenda. The council gave direction by a five to zero vote on both items.
Great, thank you. So we're going to adjourn from closed session and welcome to the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. And we have a guest here to give us, to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Plum Russell.
Remove hats and hoods.
Is it on?
I don't know.
Is it on, Joe? Tap it.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, that's working.
Remove hats and hoods. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And do you have some special guests here today? I think you have your.
No volume coming out of that thing.
Oh, oh, thank you. And we have a special guest. I think we have your principal here. Don't worry, you're not in trouble. Far from it. And could you tell us a few things about your wonderful student here?
I would be happy to. This is on. So Plum has Mrs. Kinzer. So I'm the proud principal of Grandview Elementary School, Tara Green. And Ms. Kinzer is known around town to be the toughest fifth grade teacher. So just to preempt that. But she says Plum is the ideal student to have in class. She gets along with everyone and works collaboratively with a group. She says when you first meet Plum, you might think of her as shy, but this is misleading. She may be soft spoken, but she doesn't hesitate to ask questions when needed. She's willing to share her opinions and willing to listen to the opinions of others. Plum knows how to stand up for her rights. She can question a test score or answer politely and respectfully. She gives her best effort for everything she does. She also knows how to have fun. Watching her group's hip hop routine is an excellent example. When the teacher says she suggested her for this honor, all the fifth grade teachers were in complete agreement. Plum is a student who quietly does every single thing that's asked of her. Her family is with her tonight, and they shared that they're excited to attend the City Council meeting to watch Plum receive this special honor. Her family says Plum is our little ray of sunshine. She's brightened our world since the day she was born. She brings such great energy and light with her wherever she goes. She has a big heart and really cares about other people. She's kind and thoughtful and wants everyone to feel included and loved. She spends lots of time reading and creating. She loves being outside and going on adventures with her family. She's a very loyal friend and is the happiest when surrounded by her favorite people. Congratulations to you, Plum. We love you and we think you are an amazing Gator.
Introduce you as Mrs. Green.
Yeah.
The principal of Grandview. So on behalf of my fellow council members who are all standing here for you, I want to present to you this certificate of recognition saying that Samantha, well Plum Russell, led the Pledge of Allegiance today, and you did a great job. We really appreciate it. So why don't we have your family come up and with my fellow council members? And we'll go ahead and take your picture. And one, and one more thing. The gifts just keep coming. We have Mayor Pro Tem Hoard.
City pin for you.
Well, thank you so much. I expect to see big things of you at a middle school.
Really an honor. Thank you.
So nice to be here.
Mrs. Green, thank you for letting us do that. Bike safety.
Oh, yes.
Assembly are so important.
Very important. You're all following the rules.
That's hope.
No bad children.
Okay, ready for a roll call, please? I'm sorry, let's.
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoard.
Present.
Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda and waiver a full reading of ordinances?
Can't vote.
Oh, he still, his screen is, okay.
If you could do a voice vote.
So a voice vote, please?
If I could have the mayor announce the motion in a second, then I'll do a roll call.
So you have to tell her that I moved in, David.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So move to accept by Mayor Pro Tem Amy Hoard and seconded by Councilmember David Lesser. Will we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Hoard.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Franklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Now we have City Council and community organization announcements of upcoming events. You have one minute in the case of Miracosta. We have a minute each. Assume you're all Miracosta, right?
Good evening, members of the City Council. I'm Alex Finler. Here's what's happening in Miracosta. We are currently holding Miracosta Drama's Footloose Musical. It has been a record-breaking performance that's run from April 26th to May 4th. It has become Miracosta's most attended theatrical event on record, including a record-breaking opening weekend that saw 1,100 tickets sold. We are also in the midst of Teacher Appreciation Week. We are handing out various gifts and coffee to the teachers as well as other organized events to appreciate their efforts for our school.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Alex. I'm Mira Koldawi, and we also have our third UCLA Blood Drive of the year coming up this month on Thursday, May 23rd, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Miracosta is consistently ranked in the top percentile of donations across Southern California, and we look forward to trying to beat these numbers later this month.
And Mira, do you have to be 18?
You have to be 17 years of age, but if you are 17 and not 18, then you do need a permission form to be signed by your parents.
Great, terrific, thank you.
Hello, I'm Luca Yadi. We are also amidst of AP testing, both here and at schools nationwide. Throughout these next two weeks, over 1,000 students will take part in at least one AP exam here at Miracosta. And the Miracosta Boys' Varsity Volleyball Team has moved on to the CIF finals, and they will play against Loyola on Saturday at Cerritos College.
CDM.
And, yeah, oh, sorry, didn't I just hear the LAX, LAX lacrosse team won?
Oh, yes, I believe so as well.
Yes, they're going on to CF, CAF, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? If you're getting ready to make an announcement, please feel free to come on down to the chairs down here.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I would like to invite the teens of the community to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month by participating in our boba-making program on Tuesday, May 21st at 4:00 p.m. Come to the library and learn about boba, a tea-based drink that originated in Taiwan. Then make your very own boba tea, milk tea drink to sip while creating a mini boba keychain. This event is designed for teens and tweens, and attendance is limited, so advanced registration is required on our website, lacountylibrary.org. And when I checked this afternoon, there were a limited number of slots, so anyone interested should sign up quickly. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Josh.
Good evening. I'm Alexandria Elatrania, the Communications and Civic Engagement Manager. I just wanted to come here tonight and make a plug for our, the city's service request app called Reach Manhattan Beach. And right now, there's a slide up there with a QR code of where you can access and download the app. But it's a way, a great way for you as a citizen or anyone walking down the street to make a service request. So if you see a pothole or see a streetlight that's out or any other item that you think the city can take care of, whether it's graffiti or something's out of place, you can hop onto the app, and it's super easy in a couple of taps just to make a request to the city. And you can actually track it on the app as well, and you'll get a notification when it's been taken care of. So just another plug for that. There are postcards in the back. If you can't get out your smartphone fast enough to get this QR code, grab a postcard and learn how to help improve the city. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Ally. And the work order that's generated from your request goes directly to the responsible department in Manhattan Beach. And so it's a really quick way to get it all reported, and then you get an email when the work is finished. So thank you, Ally. Anyone else? Hey, Tom.
Good evening. Tom Backley, Beach City's Health District. Just want to make a quick announcement about Mental Health Awareness Month, which is the month of May. And also on May 18th, we're going to be doing a mental health conference. We started off calling it a summit, and our youth said, what's a summit? And I said, well, it's kind of like a conference. And they said, well, why don't you, why don't you call it a conference? So we're doing that on May 18th. Want to make sure that you're aware of that. And I have Maya and Delaney with me tonight, and they just want to say a few words about some of the work that they've been doing.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mai Shapuri. Delaney and I are both on the Youth Advisory Council on Beach City's Health District.
We are a group of teens that work together to help further the mental health and well-being of the Beach Cities communities, especially in teens. And we work on this through mental health and campaigns that focus, well, right now we're working on campaigns that focus anti-drug and alcohol abuse, just to further the mental health of our teens. And we also work with Alcove to benefit the health of all ages in the Beach Cities communities.
Great, thank you all very much.
Good evening. Andrew Enriquez, I'm your operations captain for the Police Department. I'm here to invite everybody to the Public Safety Open House at the Police and Fire Facility, 404 2015th Street, on Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll have some demonstrations out there, station tours of both police and fire, and plenty of opportunities to take photos with your police and firefighters. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Captain. So this is the first time in what, about two years, three years?
It's been a while.
It's been a while, okay. It's a great show, folks. Take the kids.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members, City Officials, Mr. Lee. I am Bobby Bell. I am the WM rep from, for Manhattan Beach for recycling, educating. It was brought to our attention that City Council would love us to come up and just share what we're doing in the community a little bit more. So this is announcement number one of 168 future announcements. I'm hopefully going to follow Mr. Mo here shortly and after 168 more announcements and go ahead and retire. I've been in Manhattan Beach for about a year and a half, and when I started, my number one job was ABSB outreach. That's basically the Assembly Bill and the State Bill, which just enforces every business, every multifamily has to have recycling, has to have organics. Just help, I've met with, like I said, over 95% of all the businesses, helping them understand the law, bringing them into compliance. It hasn't been much of an issue with these people at all. Everyone pretty much goes along with it. While I'm doing this, I'm there, I take the opportunity to try to right-size them, making sure that they have the right-sized containers, they're not wasting money. Hopefully, I can help them out. I also offer my assistants to come in, help work with the kitchen staff, work with whatever staff they have, so we can get them the right size they need. Most of them see me as a salesman. I'm not a salesman. I'm just here to offer assistance, so I get shut down pretty quick with that. But I try to explain to them, Manhattan Beach, recycling is half the cost. Let's get you more recycling, less landfill. And organics, as you guys know, in Manhattan Beach is free, so let's start using that as much as we can, keep the stuff out of our landfill, and hopefully divert as much as we can. That's all I got, 167 more to go.
There we go.
You guys all have a blessed evening.
Your Honor, question.
Yes.
Hey, Bobby, those don't speak government speak. Tell them what WM is.
WM is Waste Management. We are the city franchise hauler for the city of Manhattan Beach.
Perfect.
Have a blessed evening all.
Thank you, Bobby.
Wait, I had a question for Bobby.
Okay.
You were, you can't retire.
Just that close.
You can't retire yet. If you could come back down to the podium.
Yes, ma'am.
So I saw you had, you know, the list of, here's what you can put in the food composters that you can recycle. Can you clear it up once and for all? Pet waste or dog poop in bags? That doesn't go in the, that doesn't go in the green.
Unfortunately, that's landfill. All your dog poop.
Trash.
Yes, whether, and I try not to say the word trash, because when you say trash, people think, just throw it in the trash. I like to use the word landfill, because that sets in their head, this is going into a giant hole in the ground. That's going to be there forever.
I'm not going to feel guilty about my dog.
No.
But, but, people, I see a lot of people leaving bags of dog poop next to trash cans in our city, like on the greenbelt in the Strand. And I'm, I don't understand why they're doing it. I think, do they think, it doesn't go into the landfill? It does.
It does. It goes, does keep it out of the recycling, it does not go into organics, it goes into our trash or our landfill cans.
All right, put it in the cans, people.
Gravel pit.
The gravel pit.
God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public, all right, well, community announcement, community announcement. Okay, so we'll move on to public comments. So I'm going to make a short announcement. It's come to our attention that people have been disrupting City Council meetings in other cities with antisemitic or racially-based comments through Zoom. Such comments are disruptive and interfere with the people's business and are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. I'm instructing the City Clerk's Office to mute any speakers who attempt to disrupt the meeting with antisemitic or derogatory comments based upon race, gender, or other protected categories. So public comments, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Louis Pasteur, Manhattan Beach. Before I start, I'd like to preface it, on April 15th, I celebrated not only my 74th birthday, but being in Manhattan Beach for 68 years. So you have to understand where I'm coming from. I think Russ Lesser referred to it as beach trash. I'm here to address the proposed possible pool. I don't think we need another pool. I can tell you a better place to spend some of the money. When I was younger, we, a lot of us were angry because they built Unimart, which became Disco Fair, two guys, now Target. And we said, if they keep building, they will come. A few years ago, I ran for City Council. I lost to a better-looking guy, smarter guy, right, David? And they asked me if I would change the footprint of the mall back then, before it became what it is. And I said, no, if you build it, they will come. And they keep coming, and they keep coming. I think there's a better way to spend that money. I can give you some information on how you can help us at Liberty Village. I know that's east of Sepulveda, and all my friends at West Sepulveda in high school used to say, why are you east of Sepulveda? I go, hey, we're still Manhattan Beach. There's things you could spend, spend that on. And I'll remind you that we did have two pools at Aviation High School, which they allowed to rot and tear down along with the high school. And then a few, a couple of years later, they wrote an article in the paper saying Miracosta was getting too crowded, and all of us aviation graduates went, of course. So I think it gets to the point that a managerial thing, a used aircraft, we used to say, your inability to plan doesn't constitute an emergency for us. So I'm urging you to maybe look at that money and spend it on other things rather than this pool that'll just bring more folks in, especially at the old Foster Bag Area, which is already crowded at the park. I appreciate, if any of you need to contact me, I have all sorts of projects they can do in Liberty Village, especially with guard to traffic that's just going nuts. I appreciate your time, thanks.
Great, thank you, Louis. Also, if I can make a reminder that during public comments, you only have one opportunity to speak on a subject. So when we talk about, for example, a bag pool later, we can't, if you've talked about it in public comments here, so. Mr. Joseph?
I won't mention bag pool.
Okay.
I wanted to bring up, I had brought up before about on the walk streets and the tall vegetation and hardscaping on the properties adjacent to like Bayview and Ocean. In the last month, I slammed on the brakes twice to miss bicyclists coming down the walk streets, not stopping, going through Bayview and on down. And you can't see them until the last second, because some of the, you know, the landscaping and whatnot is so high it blocks people. And these were adults. If they're kids, I wouldn't have seen them at all. And it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when someone gets hit. And I think there's code that says you're only allowed to have plants about 42 inches, which means you'd be able to see people coming down the hill. And there are some places where it's eight feet tall, and you can't see anyone coming down those hills. And you're driving down Bayview, and someone cuts in front of you, and they don't see you either. And so there should be something to get those people to trim their yards, so that way there's some visibility in those little intersections. It'd be just terrible if someone got hurt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council Members. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Hillary Rosen, and I'd love to represent Manhattan Beach as a board trustee of the LA West Vector Control Board. I'm an infectious disease epidemiologist and have been working for the California Department of Public Health for 22 years. I have a great understanding of vector-borne diseases, vector control strategies, and the effect of climate change on arthropods and the viruses, bacteria, and parasites they transmit.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Heather Kim, and while I haven't seen this, a friend sent this to me. The City of Beverly Hills and Constable General of Israel in Los Angeles present a temporary art display as a memorial for the victims of the October 7th, 2023 attack in Israel. The art installation includes 1,400 flags, with each flag representing victims from over 30 nations whose lives were lost in the attack. And that's in our neighboring, kind of neighboring town, Beverly Hills. I hope that Manhattan Beach can come up with something similar to, to show our support to the Jewish people and, you know, to many of people in our community. I think having some type of a display would be appropriate to, to do that for Manhattan Beach as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Anybody else? Colleagues, I forgot to ask you before on community announcements, does anybody have anything? Wrong it? Okay, so we're gonna, and how about Zoom?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, so we're going to close public comments. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. So do we have a motion to? So we have a motion to accept from Councilmember Montgomery and seconded.
And I have a comment, though, about it.
Second.
Yeah, you can second, but I have a comment about the consent calendar, that's all.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't want to, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. I didn't want to pull it, I'm going to support it, but I did want to point out item number two in the Declaration and Proclamations for the following, and it's, it's great. We have, there's lots of proclamations honoring our employees and older Americans, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I, I know it wasn't done intentionally, and I didn't request it, but I'd like to add that Jewish American Heritage Month is also May. And so if we could just make a note of it and acknowledge it here, and then next time try to get it on the list. I would appreciate that, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Happy Jewish American Heritage Month.
And the vote?
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, so we move on to general business. There's no public hearings, but general business, and that is the annual appointments to city boards and commissions.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Lisa Tamar, City Clerk. For those of you that don't know, this is Patty's last presentation in the City Clerk's office. She was promoted to City Manager's Office as Management Analyst, and happy that she's done a great job, boards and commissions tracking. And our new Deputy City Clerk, Brianna, will be taking over after this.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patty Matson, Management Analyst. On April 23rd, the City Council held the annual Boards and Commissions interviews. Fifty-two applicants were considered, and tonight we'll be filling 12 upcoming vacancies. If there's no questions from council before we begin the appointment process, we should open the Florida public comment.
Any questions, colleagues? No? Public comments? Here? How about on Zoom? None on Zoom? Okay. So we just asked that you bear with us. This is shuffling a lot of paper here. We had a record, how many, 44?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-two.
Oh, 52 applicants for the boards and, and commissions. And so we've got a lot of people to go through and, and discuss, and so we have a voting process here, and we're going to go ahead and start off, right, with Planning Commission? Seat number one, Member at Large?
Yes, the seat is currently held by Kristin Sistos, and she is seeking reappointment. And we'll begin nominations with Councilmember Lesser.
Great.
My practice is to support incumbents, particularly when they've contributed and been present at meetings, so I would support the incumbent, Kristin Sistos.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similarly, we have a wealth of riches, an embarrassment of riches in terms of applicants for all these commissions. I, I think that it should be known, though, to a lot of them that they are incumbents in these seats, and I think they've done well, very well for the city, they're volunteers. And so I have no further at this time.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you. Your Honor, I would say that Kristin's experience as an attorney specialized in real estate, she shows up, doesn't miss a meeting. We, I recognize her as unique talent. I'll support her reappointment as well.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoard?
And I will also be supporting Commissioner Sistos for your report, reappointment.
Okay, and I'll make it unanimous.
Okay, Kristin Sistos is reappointed to seat number one, Planning Commission. Next, we have Planning Commission's seat number two, Member at Large. This seat is currently held by Jim Dillavou, and he is also seeking reappointment. And we'll begin with Mayor Franklin.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to nominate Stefan Kampa. He has been very diligent in offering his advice. He's a talented architect and builder and resident, of course. And he really contributes a lot with his public comments and his knowledge for the council.
Councilmember Lesser?
I'm going to appoint the incumbent, Jim Dillavou, who's trained as an attorney, has extensive experience in real estate, and tries to participate as best he can, even when he's out of town, and I will nominate Jim.
Okay, Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you, and yes, Your Honor, I agree that Mr. Kampa certainly participates and has a great experience, but so is Mr. Dillavou, and he has the seat, and I think he deserves reappointments. I'll, I'll be supporting Mr. Dillavou.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also know Jim as a longtime resident, and he is the person, part of the team that brought the Gelsons market to our city. And he did a good job. Although he was an attorney, non-practicing attorney, he turned his sights to development, which I think is good, important for us to have, so I'll support his reappointment.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hoard?
Yes, and I do appreciate our mayor nominating Stefan Kampa. As Councilmember Napolitano said, he often comes to our meetings and contributes, and that is great, and I hope he will continue to do that. But I do know that the incumbent, Jim Dillavou, also hope he will continue to do that. But I do know that the incumbent, Jim Dillivu, also participates and is well-prepared. And so I'm prepared to reappoint him as well.
And I'm going to make it unanimous.
Great. Jim Dillivu is reappointed to seat number two. Next, we have Parking and Public Improvements Commission, seat number four, Member at Large. And just a little bit of information about this seat, it is currently vacant with a term that ends May 31st, 2025. Whomever's appointed to this seat will have an appointment date of May 7th, 2024, which is this evening. They will fulfill the remainder of the original term and will then be automatically appointed to a three-year term without further action. And we'll begin nominations with Mayor Pro Tem Haworth.
Thank you. Really impressive. Well, all of, all of the folks who applied, you know, took it very seriously, very diligent in their applications. And they all had two minutes to sort of present their case to us. And so I want to thank everybody who stepped up. It's very difficult to do this in public, but I, this is why I ran for office. I can do it. So anyway, I was very impressed with Rose Marie Bala, who is the COO at LMU. And she talked a lot about the different kind of building and infrastructure projects that they've done and how she's had to really examine how parking will be impacted and how traffic patterns are impacted. And I thought that was very pertinent experience. So my nominee will be Rose Marie Bala, or Bella. I don't know how.
Okay. Mayor Franklin?
Yes, thank you. I too have read Ms. Bala's background. I think she, as the Facilities Manager and Executive Vice President of Loyola Marymount University just up the road, I think she mentioned that they manage 3,000 parking spaces. And I'm not quite sure if that's more than we have here in the city. So I think she's up for that challenge and having to deal with students. But it is a very impressive background. I have done a lot of work with colleges and universities, and I often refer to them as mini, you know, actually not mini cities, but they are cities. They're built in the same structure. So I think that we'd benefit greatly with her experience. So I'm gonna nominate Rose Marie Bala as well.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
I was very impressed by Rose Marie as well. I also was impressed by the many applicants. Thank you for submitting your application and also for taking the time to interview with us, just as Mayor Tim Haworth mentioned. I want to get some more people involved with our city. So I was very impressed by Jacqueline Chow, and I'd like to nominate her.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Can I remember how many can I nominate?
For nominations, just one at this point in time.
The first one.
All right. I'll go with Heather Kim.
Councilmember Montgomery?
I was impressed with Rose Marie Bala, the fact that COO at LMU, even though they did give Steve a diploma, I don't hold that against her.
That is perfect.
But the fact that we have a wealth of talent that we have in the city, it's amazing that we have here. But her experience, as the mayor mentioned, more parking spots than we have in the city, and she sees it daily. I'll nominate her as well.
Okay. So the three moving forward are Rose Marie Bala, Jacqueline Chow, and Heather Kim. And in this round, you can vote for one or two of the nominees.
Okay. So Bala and Kim? Heather Kim?
Councilmember Lesser?
Jacqueline and Rose Marie.
Rose Marie's Bala, right?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Napolitano?
Kim and Bala.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Bala and Chow.
And Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Bala.
Bala. So in this case, since each of them got more than two, all three of them move forward. And so starting with Councilmember Lesser.
Rose Marie Bala.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Kim.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Rose Marie Bala.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Bala.
And Mayor Franklin?
And Bala. I'll join.
Okay. Rose Marie Bala is appointed to PPIC seat number four. Next, we have the PPIC seat number five, Member at Large. This seat is currently held by Bob DeJau, and he is seeking reappointment. We'll begin with Councilmember Montgomery.
Bob DeJau. He shows up. He's, he's probably the study this one, anybody else next to our traffic engineers. So I support Bob for reappointment.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Bob DeJau.
Mayor Franklin?
I'm gonna put another name on, just because I'm so impressed with her background as well. We've got a abundance of great, great people signing up this year. But Jill Schechter. She worked, she lived in Calabasas beforehand and was on the Traffic and Transportation Committee, similar to what we're doing here. And she served several terms, so I'm gonna take advantage of that experience.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
I too was very impressed by Jill Schechter, who's recently moved to Manhattan Beach with this extraordinary experience. But I will support the incumbent, Bob DeJau. I'll nominate.
No further.
Okay.
No further nominations. And I'll, I'll change mine to DeJau and support him.
Okay. And?
Or, I'm sorry, no, it's not my turn.
Make it unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob DeJau is reappointed.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Commission's seat number four, Member at Large. This seat is currently held by Stephen Doran, and he is seeking reappointment. We'll begin with Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. And again, unless there's a compelling reason not to reappoint, I typically support the incumbent. So I'm gonna be supporting Stephen Doran.
Councilmember Montgomery?
I'll support Stephen Doran as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Yeah, I mean, I, there's just so many great people, but I will also support Stephen Doran.
Okay. Mayor Franklin?
Stephen Doran. Thank you.
And Councilmember Lesser?
Let's make it unanimous. I support Stephen DeJau as well.
Stephen Doran is reappointed to seat number four.
Doran, sorry. Conflating names.
Next, we have Parks and Recreation Commission's seat number five, the older adult seat. This seat is currently held by Lori McCarthy, but she is termed out. We'll begin with Councilmember Lesser.
Roberta Schreiner has been actively involved in our community for many years and has shown up at the Senior Advisory Committee on her own as a volunteer. Proud to support her. Nominate her.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No further.
Councilmember Montgomery?
No further.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Well, I have to say her name out loud because I love her so much, Row. I, I love her because she shows up and she participates, and she makes this world a better place.
And Mayor Franklin?
And I was gonna, I nominate Fred Taylor. But I will make it unanimous for Row because she knows where I live.
Roberta Schreiner is appointed to seat number five. Next, we have the Parks and Rec Commission's seat number seven, which is the student representative seat. And that seat is currently held by Daniel Greenberg. He is termed out as it's a one-year term. We'll begin with Mayor Franklin.
This group was so impressive. It was just really tough to, to do this. They were talented. They are already giving their, a lot of time to the city and to their schools. So I just want to encourage them, if, no matter what happens today, just keep trying. But you're, you're all gonna do great, I know. I nominate Thomas Maloney. He is a Parks and Rec employee already, teaching swimming. And he had a lot of enthusiasm and some very good ideas.
Next, we have Councilmember Lesser?
Boy, I would echo what the mayor just said. They're really an impressive group of young people in our community, and this is gonna be very difficult. Grant Lang.
Councilmember Napolitano?
I would echo what's been said. I also think that we've had so many good applicants in so many ways. We need to find other outlets for them and have a youth council or something because just appointing one doesn't seem fair to the rest because they all have great aspirations and input. I'm going to go with Isabella Jacobson. No further.
And Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Yeah, I am gonna nominate Ruby Duranzas. One of the things, these kids, and again, echoing, it was humbling, actually, especially to hear from the kids when they, when they presented themselves. So accomplished, so, you know, with it, and so much going on. And one thing that I read in her application is, when she was chosen, I believe the, I think it was the Hermosa Kuanis Volunteer, or Student of the Year for all her volunteerism. I know that Ruby will show up, and probably the other kids will too, but I also know this, so that's why I'm nominating Ruby.
Okay. So moving forward, we have Thomas Maloney, Grant Lang, Isabella Jacobson, and Ruby Duranzas. Beginning with Councilmember Lesser?
Grant Lang and Isabella Jacobson.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Jacobson.
Councilmember Montgomery?
She is my niece, but I'm still gonna support her. Isabella Jacobson and Grant Lang.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Ruby and Bella.
For the record, Isabella.
Isabella. For the record, Isabella.
And I'm gonna do Grant Lang and Isabella. Where does that leave us?
So moving forward, we have Grant Lang and Isabella Jacobson. Beginning with Councilmember Napolitano.
Jacobson.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Jacobson.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Jacobson.
Mayor Franklin?
Jacobson.
And Councilmember Lesser?
Make it unanimous. Isabella Jacobson.
Isabella Jacobson is appointed to seat number seven on the Parks and Rec Commission. Next, we have Library Commission, seat number five, Member at Large. The seat is currently held by Janet Jones, but she is termed out. We'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Haworth.
I had a really hard time with this one as well. So my nominee is, and I actually was going back and forth between the two Brookes, frankly, but it's gonna be Brooke Muschat. She actually, she already spends like three hours a week at our library and also has a real history of volunteerism. And as I said before, I, you know, want someone who knows what it means, they're gonna show up and participate. We have, we have a fantastic library commission. We want, you know, to maintain that. So that's my nomination.
Perfect. Mayor Franklin?
Okay. That's mine as well. Brooke Muschat.
Councilmember Lesser?
Wow. I was very impressed with Andrew Chang. Appreciated his knowledge, his interests.
Okay. Councilmember Napolitano?
For all those same reasons, Samuel Bratman.
Yes.
Totally agree.
And Councilmember Montgomery?
No further.
Okay. So moving forward, we have Brooke Muschat, Andrew Chang, and Samuel Bratman. Beginning with Council, or Mayor Franklin.
Bratman and Muschat?
Councilmember Lesser?
Andrew Chang and Dr. Bratman.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Bratman.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Dr. Bratman and Andrew Chang.
And Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Mus, Muschat.
Okay. Let's see. All three move forward.
Oh, God.
Beginning with Councilmember Lesser.
Oh, this is hard. Andrew Chang.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Bratman.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Dr. Bratman.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
I'll, I'll go with Bratman.
And Mayor Franklin?
And I'll go with Dr. Bratman as well.
Okay. So that's four for Bratman, one for Chang.
Let's make it unanimous.
Okay. Samuel Bratman is not, appointed to Library Commission's seat number five. Next, we have Library Commission's seat number six, also a student representative. The seat is currently held by Catherine Jester, and she is termed out. Beginning with Councilmember Montgomery.
Wow. It's tough for me. I'm gonna go to Ruby Duranzas. Ruby?
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
I know. Chloe Kim.
Mayor Franklin?
Sydney Huber. All these students are great. They're just terrific. Sydney's got a terrific work ethic and is involved with a lot of different things. I think she brings a good, broad base of knowledge to, to the job.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Lesser?
I was impressed by Ky, all of them, actually, but Cully, Kylie Cullen.
And Councilmember Napolitano?
No further.
Okay. So moving forward, we have Ruby Duranzas, Chloe Kim, Sydney Huber, and Kylie Cullen. Beginning with Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Ruby Duranzas and Chloe Kim.
Mayor Franklin?
Sydney Huber and Chloe Kim.
Councilmember Lesser?
Ruby and Chloe.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Kylie Cullen and Sydney Huber.
Still all.
And Councilmember Montgomery?
Initial nomination, Ruby, along with Sydney Huber.
So Sydney Huber in round two?
Yes. So the only one that is not moving forward is Kylie Cullen. So yes, Mayor Franklin?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed your nomination or your appointment. I missed yours, Mayor Franklin.
Yeah. Okay. Sydney Huber.
Councilmember Lesser?
Chloe. Kim.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Huber.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Sydney Huber.
And Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Chloe.
Okay. So you have two for Kim and three for Huber. You would move into round three. They both move forward. Oh, wait, actually, my apologies. With three votes or more.
Yeah, I'll make it unanimous. I mean, I'll, yeah.
I'll move it back to unanimous, too. Unanimous.
Okay, make it unanimous for Sydney Huber.
Sydney Huber.
Sydney is appointed to seat number six on the Library Commission. Next, we have Cultural Arts Commission's seat number three, which is a Member at Large. The seat is currently held by Rod Spackman. He did not apply for reappointment. And we'll begin with Councilmember Napolitano.
Marie Coleman.
Marie Coleman as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Marie Coleman.
Mayor Franklin?
Heather Kim?
Councilmember Lesser?
Marie Coleman.
So that's four for Coleman and one for Kim?
And we'll make it unanimous.
Perfect. Thank you. Marie Coleman is appointed to seat number three on the Cultural Arts Commission. Next, we have Cultural Arts Commission's seat number six, student representative. The seat is currently held by Samantha Erlich-Fine, and she is termed out. We'll begin with Councilmember Lesser.
Brutal. Grant Lang.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Maya Manasvi.
Manasvi. Councilmember Montgomery?
I'm gonna nominate Anthony Pandos. He missed it last year by one vote. It's the guy designed socks that sold out. So I'm gonna go with Anthony Pandos again.
You just want the socks.
I already have the socks.
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate, you know, some of these kids, by the way, some Yeah, I really appreciate, you know, some of these kids, by the way, some are juniors, but there are some that were even freshmen that applied, which is great, because it's, you know, they're trying hard, but it means also you can reapply. And I really admire it when kids reapply. And Anthony, I was strongly supporting him last year, and I'm really pleased that he reapplied, and I'm supporting Anthony Padnos. And I want some socks. I'll buy them!
I'd want mine too.
Mayor Franklin?
I can't be bought for socks, no.
I'm not, I'm buying my socks.
But I was very impressed with Anthony. However, I wanna give a shot to Grant Lang.
Okay, so we have Grant Lang, Maya Manasvi, and Anthony Padnos moving forward, beginning with Councilmember Napolitano.
Maya and Anthony.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Anthony Padnos.
Mayor Pro Tim Howarth?
Padnos.
Mayor Franklin?
We'll go Grant, Lang, and Anthony.
And Councilmember Lesser?
Grant and Anthony.
Okay, so moving forward, we have Anthony Padnos and Grant Lang, starting with Councilmember Montgomery.
Anthony Padnos.
Anthony Padnos.
Anthony Padnos.
Just three votes there. Vote for Anthony as well.
Unanimous.
Okay. Anthony Padnos is appointed to seat number six on the Cultural Arts Commission. And our last appointment for the evening is to the L.A. County West Factor Control Board. It's a Member-at-Large seat that's currently held by Wayne Powell. He is eligible for reappointment, and this new term for the seat is going to begin on January 1st, 2025. We'll begin with Mayor Franklin.
Okay. This one's tough too. Hillary Rosen?
Councilmember Lesser?
Wayne Powell.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No further.
Councilmember Montgomery?
I'm gonna nominate, I second the motion for Hillary Rosen. If you guys didn't know who she is, just three words you have to know. Ethologist, the California Department of Public Health, 21 years working for the state. This isn't a part-time volunteer lady, she's a pro, and we get her for free. Someone who get like that, my backyard wants to work for us for free as a commissioner, you take them all day long. So I support her.
That was seven words. No further.
Trying to shorten it.
Moving forward, we have Hillary Rosen and Wayne Powell, beginning with Councilmember Lesser.
Wayne Powell and Hillary Rosen.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Powell.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Rosen.
Mayor Pro Tim Howarth?
Rosen Powell.
And Mayor Franklin?
Rosen Powell.
Okay, both moved forward, beginning with Councilmember Napolitano.
Powell.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Hillary Rosen.
Mayor Pro Tim Howarth? Mayor Franklin? And Councilmember Lesser?
Powell.
Okay, so that's three votes for Hillary Rosen and two votes for Wayne Powell. Hillary Rosen would move forward and be appointed. Then, since she'll be new to that seat, she'll serve a two-year term. And that concludes the appointments.
Thank you, former Mayor Powell, for your past service in that position. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All that's tough. Here, let me catch your breath for a second. Congratulations. Item number nine, consideration of Beg Pool modernization study findings and conceptual design options. So Parks and Recreation Director Lehman?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. I would like to provide a quick background on this item to set the stage for the presentation. To begin with, as council is aware, there's a large demand for swim programs within the community. When we open up registration, they fill immediately. And there's been previous efforts to evaluate Beg Pool. Those were made in 2008 and 2015. However, did not proceed due to funding and other concerns. In 2020, City Council approved the Park Master Plan, which included an aquatic center as a long-term project. In 2021, exploring an aquatic center was added to the work plan. Community surveys were conducted in 2021, '22, and '23. In August of 2023, City Council awarded a contract to HMC Architects to study two options for upgrading the Beg Pool facility. Option one focuses on renovating the existing 25-yard shallow pool and support buildings at the current Beg site. And option number two is to design a new community aquatic center with two pools at the current Beg site, one 25-yard pool and one 35-meter pool. Tonight is an opportunity for HMC to share their findings and options, recommendations, and cost estimates for facility design, construction, operation, and site improvements. So with that, I will turn it over to Managing Principal Brad Glassick from HMC.
Thank you. It's great to be here again. It's a little over a year ago we started this, and been here a couple times for Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Commission sharing. So a lot of this information, for those of you in the community, we'll see this, a lot of the content is very similar to what you've seen over the last month, so we've been taking your input and building on your input. But I think the unique thing that is in tonight is in the last part of it, where we started to finally get to the costs and that. So we'll run you through what our process was and what we have here. So again, as I mentioned, we started a little less than a year ago in August 2023. The study, we just concluded it. So everything that was asked for in the task order given to HMC Architects, we've completed it to date. Those tasks were five different tasks that we had, and that was first to start with a site analysis, familiarize ourselves with the site, understand the building, understand the community, and everything going around, around Polywalk Park, Beg Pool, all the things in that zone of the city. Then we were also to engage in community engagement, really to be informed by the community of what the community was looking for in the needs. As Mark mentioned, there's lots of data over the last 10, 12 years from the community on different chances to look at a pool at this site. So we built on that, and again, reengaged the community. That got us into a needs assessment, that we could understand what the community was looking for, asking for, along with input from Parks and Rec and other stakeholders in terms of Manhattan Beach Unified School District, and understand what it is. That led us to take all that information and put it into a conceptual design, as Mark mentioned, two options, really trying to give variety. That is really a great way to start a design process, to give you options, because not one option will fit all the needs. So it gives you a give and take. And then the last thing, of course, the last task we had to do was put all that, some cost to that. So we work with a, actually a national-level estimator, who is incredibly accurate in the world of estimating, nationally known for that, so that's where a lot of the cost information comes from, from that consultant that we work with for, I've worked for over 20 years now. So I know I don't look that old, but that's okay. One of the things we really wanted to compliment the city on was the community engagement. That first engagement in November was really a cool, special event, very interactive, many ways to give input, whether writing down a phrase, putting a dot on a board of, I like this, I don't like this, I don't know what this is, or as you see in that middle picture, giving the Beg complex into people's hands for them to build a pool complex of their own. And again, that last picture is us sharing some of those findings and taking those findings and showing what a design concept might look like in both of those options. So pretty special times that we had doing that. We thank everybody who was involved with that, everybody who attended. It was actually really, really an energetic night, both nights, so. And that's what we want as architects. We don't want to go off in a vacuum and design our own thing and come up with our own thoughts. We like to build on the thoughts, the community, the clients that we'll work with, and then bring our expertise in as a layer to that and really develop. So through that process, we got into the community outreach results that were coming both from those community engagement meetings and the online survey that had over 1,400 people contribute to that. And we see here really the muss. And I know one practice is don't read a PowerPoint slide, everybody can read it right, but I think it's important to read this one a little bit, because it's really the key points that informed a lot of the things that were going into conceptual designs. And really, the big thing was more water. As Mark mentioned, there's just not enough water space in the city of Manhattan Beach to satisfy all the needs, from recreational, other groups, and again, the needs of the adjacent junior high school. Larger pools, larger pool or pools, that was really it. They don't know. We just know we need more water. So those two are somewhat related. How you do that, whether it's a one body of water or two bodies of water, that was something we investigated in both the options. I think this is no surprise, upgraded bathrooms and upgraded locker rooms. That's probably the number one thing we heard outside of the water issue, is really a facility that I feel comfortable going into to change, to clean, to rinse off, and to have it there to support. A lot of the desires come from other things related to that, increased pool availability, that is a function of more water. Having ability to run more programming is right below that. Again, right now, there are not outdoor showers out there. That is actually one really nice way to have people rinse off, especially in the junior high programs, to not necessarily need to go into a old locker room, but really have something outdoor, just rinse off and get back to the junior high. More seating and shades, support around a pool complex. And again, another option, a desire, was to have more water safety training, which again, more water allows you to have more water time to provide those programs. And we don't want to miss on the concerns either. There's lots of concerns about this. What we heard from this was, you know, what is this gonna be like during construction? And I'll tell you, anything during construction is, sometimes it's a difficult thing to get around. So that's something that you had to be very diligent about, and that's what future investigation will have to do, again, from the construction side. No surprise, we heard this from day one, I think it was an August meeting here last year, parking. Parking is a big concern around that, so we'll show some concerns and thoughts about that, neighborhood impacts related to light and noise. And then, of course, we kept seeing wrote, written on our placemat at that community engagement, money, you know, dollar signs. How are we gonna fund this? What is that? And that's a lot of what this information is really trying to provide, so the city can understand where funding needs to go, how to do it, and how to budget properly for a project of certain scale and size. So, okay. That got us to the needs assessment, and again, this is an aerial of the Beg site. This, I won't read every slide, every caption on there, but we see there's lots of shortcomings at the site right now. The site was never designed really to have vehicle traffic go down that ramp that goes from Peck Road down to the Beg Pool site. It was a walking path from the adjacent school when Manhattan Beach Unified did it. It's been now a pedestrian path, it's a car path, only goes one way. If there's one car on it, you wait at the top or bottom, so it's a safety issue. You go into the building, and there are things that are outdated. Beyond their useful life is really the word we would like to use as architects when we go in and assess that building in terms of its systems. The parking, again, while there are 69 spaces there right now, they are not laid out to current code in terms of fire lane, turn radius, width of the road, all those types of things. So that's something that would need to be addressed, no matter what you do, if you start to do improvements at this place. So with that, we took that information and started to develop two options. Option one is to really modernize the existing building, keep the building there, but we know it's gonna have to go through some work. And then also put the building, the pool, modernize the pool in place, and not really expand the water area of the pool, just say that's the baseline. How do we fix up this facility so it is in itself just a functioning facility as it is? Option two is taking another step of really saying, how do we really create an aquatic center that really meets the town's, the city's needs here in Manhattan Beach? And that is probably one of the critical things that we wanted to, we heard so many times, it's the community itself here in Manhattan Beach needs more water. Trying to really be that community resource to everybody. So that's where we started looking at these things that were brought up through the various phases before, and we see all that these were the project highlights, or the things we really needed to focus on. For the site, we heard again, as in so many venues, increased pool area, we need more water space for various programs, for the city and for Manhattan Beach Unified School District. Flexible deck space, bleacher and terrace seating. This was a fun one, because often when they build the Beg in the community section, people are like, I don't know what terrace seating is, but I know I like to use this grade and put steps on this hillside. And we're like, that's exactly what it is. So that pulled very high. Lawn area is a very good draw for that right now, but it's actually outside the fence area. Parking lot drop-off upgrades, we need to fix that, and then upgrades to the site in general for access in and out and for ADA compliance. When we get to the buildings, we heard the needs were community locker rooms, that was number, number one for built amenities. Also, the way lifeguards and supervision is done at the site right now is not the greatest, because it's not at the point of entry. So trying to have some lifeguard and other things that really allow us to put supervision right at the critical points. Flexible training space for the training of lifeguards and other staff who need to be at the pool site all the time. Lobby and check-in is about control, safety and security. Pool support space, just for storage, to properly store, you don't have things out on a deck. And then again, comprehensive building upgrades, if we're maintaining that building, how do we upgrade that building and get it to be a functioning building better than it is today? So that yielded us to some conceptual designs. We'll go through these pretty quick. We know the community in general has seen these through various venues. We think they're beautiful. We've heard they're beautiful, that's what Melissa told me anyway. That's what she told me. So we're not gonna spend a lot of time on that, because I think we want to talk on the impacts of what these designs are. So again, the inspiration for designing a facility in the city of Manhattan Beach is really to take your context. Again, I think in every aquatics project, we always talk about water, right? Be inspired by the water and what it's doing for you. But it's really unique here in Manhattan Beach, because you don't just have pool water nearby, you have an ocean. And it's your, it's your community, it's your culture, the waves, the dunes, the reflection of that, and swimming. So those were some of the things that started to inspire us to create a facility that would really be tailored to what Manhattan Beach is and what you are. So option number one is this renovation of the existing pool in the building. So we're not gonna demolish anything in terms of taking buildings down, but it is really looking at what can we do to the site? What does it mean to bring this building and this site up to code and good access and provide aquatic facility that will still have the same size pool, but what would the facility be like? As you can see from this graphic, we won't go through every bullet point, but its big highlights are really improving that access down safely for both vehicles and pedestrians. So it's creating separate vehicle and pedestrian circulation down to the site safely. That means the widening of that road coming down so that you have two-way traffic. That does have actually a big impact on parking when you really look at this. You will, just to make this code compliant to today's code, you will lose parking at that parking lot already, okay? I know that's one of the big concerns, but we want to make sure we understand that, just doing, let's do the bare minimum. The bare minimum will actually lose you parking to make it compliant with turn radiuses and the things that I mentioned before. The building is really looking at trying to just be modernized in the inside, it's being gutted. Full systems replacements from electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. This building would also need to go through some sort of voluntary seismic retrofit to make it safe. It was built in late 1950s. Again, governing, the governing agency for this is DSA, so it will require some things to happen in that nature. One of the key things with this component, this scheme, was also to pull that grass area into the pool complex, so shifting fence lines, so that you don't have people going in and out of a complex to have that nice amenity of the grass area that can be really adjacent to the pool. Also, there are no records of your pool equipment building and the lifeguard building being put through DSA, and really, they're at their useful life already too. So even in this scheme, we would still say you would want to build a new mechanical building for storage and the keeping of the mechanical equipment that would be running the pool. You also see there's some, in the parking lot, there's a little bit of expanded solar. That was one of the things we heard from that, from the community engagement, that they would like to see more solar, more sustainable features on this building with what we're doing. So really, the floor plan really configures the inside of the building. Again, our assessment of that building right now, just from a space use standpoint, is very inefficient. You walk in, there's this big, open, empty space in each locker room, not really usable, so let's create a place where you could house your lifeguards right in the middle of the building, to have clear access and clear vision over the pool. Then have both men's and women's locker rooms, some family restrooms, and then a lobby at the north end for a place to check. So it starts to take those critical components that you need for an aquatic facility and get those to fit in that building, which are kind of spread out across the site right now. And again, a small little building diagram of what a pool equipment building would be, a place for storage, a place for your mechanical equipment for the pool itself. And again, this is an aerial that starts to show what that transformation, even of the renovation scheme, will look like. Again, a much upgraded site in terms of access down. Again, a much upgraded site in terms of access down, getting that green area inside the pool complex and letting it really be an amenity within the pool area. And then we just give some other features. Again, creating canopies, one of the things we heard was shade. It's also taking shade from the inside of the complex and letting that canopy stretch out to be kind of a receptor to people coming to Beg Pool, knowing exactly where to enter, where the control area of the pool is, and just trying to give a little presence to a facility without building a new building, but doing a canopy element that tries to give you a little more visibility to the front entrance of the complex. And just a few views around from the pool deck opportunities, again, to other programs, fixtures and furniture can be put around. You can see the various views there. I don't think we could have gotten out of this exercise without doing some interior renderings of what really nice locker rooms and toilet rooms look like. So we have those in there too. Again, picking up on that aquatic theme, the theme of the dunes, where the color comes from and things of that nature. That was option one. Option two is where we say, well, let's look at this site as a blank canvas and really understand where it is. That was it. So we came up with this scheme based off the community input, working with Mark and his team from Donlin from the Manhattan Beach Unified School District and seeing what it is. And the access down to the site really stays fairly similar. We know we need to fix that road. And now we're going to place a building on the north side of the pool, really create this barrier between parking and the aquatic area. So you have this really nice area for two pools, a two-pool scheme that really creates an interior complex. The building is larger than your existing building there now by a couple thousand square feet to properly house lifeguards, lifeguard training and those types of things. One of the key features of this is also trying to use that slope as a little collateral for us to build in some terrace seating that will provide a nice viewing area into what we see on the top is the 35-meter pool. And then on the east side of the complex, the lower part of the screen, you see the 25-yard pool, which is taking the concept of the shallow pool you have now, but trying to expand it. Because input we got even from the junior high was the pool right now is just, it's too narrow. Needed just a little more width in that pool so that we can get better programs, more students in that, a little bit area for teaching and stairs on the south, on the east side. This also has a new equipment building there on the south side of the site. Again, more equipment to fuel these two pools. So very similar in terms of the parking layout. This one does reduce parking even more because of just trying to get that building out a little more to the north. But we'll go through some numbers a little bit later and you can see parking because there's again, some other studies that we'll look at of how do we deal with a parking situation here at the Beg site. This building again is a new building, all new. You'll be moving into something brand new. As you look on the screen, to the left of the lobby area, that central area, you'll have all the, what we call the private areas. These are not for public use necessarily. That's where lifeguards are. That's where their lockers are. That's where a training room is. Everything onto the right side of the screen is really your public use areas of your locker rooms, your family restrooms, things of that nature. So that's where the public goes in. And the lobby in the middle is where you funnel people in. You have a nice control area, trying to really give that a wide throat at the beginning and then a check-in area that can have visibility not only to the lobby, but out to the pool. So good security provided from day, from the first step inside the complex. This is again, an aerial that you'll see of that and how it lays out. This is again, looking into Polywog Park, you can see in the background, kind of looking up from Peck Road with your drone in the sky, bird's eye view there. So you see the building over to your left, the two-pool layout and a lot of the shaded canopies, you can start to see how those materialize around there. The imagery again, as you approach this, is trying to be a very subtle but powerful statement of the waves and the forming of the roof is was the design inspiration. You can see the color schemes start to come from water and from the dunes to give you just something that we feel looks fairly regional to what Manhattan Beach should be inspired by when you're looking at this type of facility. Again, you see the main entry into the lobby that can control flow in and out. Again, we often get asked, will there be other places? There'll be other access points into a pool, but what's in good pool design, you really want to have one public entry point because it has to be controlled, lifeguards on duty. So that's what that's functioning there. And again, this is a view as you come right through those doors, looking at the lobby, the check-in point, right to the large 35-meter pool with the other pool right around the corner. And on the deck, you see there just is a much more spacious view of what can be contained within the pool complex area with the building to the right and your hillside kind of going up there to Peck Road in the background. And again, different views around the deck you'll see there. And again, what's, we've got to have a locker room shot in here to show that there are nice new cleaned locker rooms that can't go unsaid. As I mentioned, both of these schemes start looking at parking and there have been some initial discussions in our planning as we do have Donlin from Manhattan Beach Unified. It's how do we alleviate some of the parking issues? We developed this quick study just to show that whether you're in option one or option two, there is the ability to get some parking up on Peck Road. Again, as we've talked through, this is something that's not set in stone between the district and the city yet, but it's a discussion they're having and it's something that we felt like we just needed to investigate so that it would show people what could potentially happen. You can see the numbers there. You can start to get a complex with a good pedestrian access down by ramp. Cars can go down, come back up and find additional parking at the top of almost, not quite doubling your capacity you have right now, but getting close at 112 right there as you can see. Option two, since the numbers were a little different in the lower parking lot and the way we do the ramp, these numbers shift a little bit, but now you're still well over 100 spots here to get additional parking there if this is an option that is, wants to be looked at in the future. So, okay. This is the slide everybody's been waiting for, right? This is it. So just so you know our process, we take all these conceptual drawings and the thoughts and imagery and we give those to our estimator. I don't know how many times we went back and forth, Melissa? Three, four? So it's embedded quite a bit, going through the consistency of the estimate and stuff. So we have them side by side here and we'll just walk through them real quick. One thing I also want to caution people about, a lot of times when people talk about a project costing a certain thing, they're usually talking about that line that says 100% total construction cost. But that's a misleading number because that's not all that you need to budget as a city for a proper project. You need to also take care of the soft costs about insurance, about contingencies, about fees, about testing and those types of things. So what we did is tried to break this down to really the bigger bite-sized pieces for each option. And the option one, which is on the left, you'll see the pool, building and site breakdown. And you have about $3 million for pools, 10.5 for building rehabilitation and systems replacement, and then the site be about 6.4 million. That gets you to about a $19.9 million construction project. And when you take various factors for the soft costs, again, fees, contingencies that you need to hold on that, then it gets you to about a $27.9 million for option one. When you look at the cost then for option two, the costs again start to, you start to see where the deltas really come. The site cost is not much different from option one because when you touch that site, you're really going to get into a lot of infrastructure, building the road, those types of things. So you start to see the deltas really come in. The pools is the biggest delta in percentage because you're building a 35-meter pool. So that's where you get your biggest delta between the option one and two. The building delta is about $3 million. When you look at that, you know, from 10.5 to 13.2 for a new building, that's really what I think the value of this study is because that allows you to make decisions. Is this worth keeping this building? Is it worth building new? Those are decisions again, that will need to be discussed. When you get into the construction costs, it's 29.7, soft cost of 10.6, then you get to total project cost of 40.3. One of the other items that was kind of, as we were moving through this, was also doing some research around on annual operating costs. Some of the, some of the information we're getting from Jesus, from your own, your city, talking to other people operating pools nearby, also coming from our aquatic consultant, Aquatic Design Group, who has their feelers in a lot of different aquatic facilities, not just in Southern California, but all around. So again, feeling pretty good about where those numbers are lying for a pool that's of that size. I think as we also talked, much of that expense is people. It's not really the energy and the thing, and the cost to run the pool. It's really employing the right amount of people, lifeguards, other people to be at that pool throughout the day. So that gets into the cost and what we're finding. So you'll see that those are, those are the costs we come down with. And all I want to say is that's really a lot of vetting and I thank Melissa and Mark and Gil especially for all the back and forth of asking questions and really probing at what does this cost mean, holding that and us working with them to set what those soft costs should be of what the city of Manhattan Beach usually runs for. I do know that other things that were talked about that really, really weren't part of the basic scope was what if we start looking at that parking on the upper part of Peck? So we put some number to that, 2.5 million to do parking improvements up in there. Expanded solar, if you saw on the site schemes, each parking lot had solar canopies in there, that's expanded solar. Code will require us to do a certain amount of solar and that will be on the building of option two. But if you want more than just to be the code minimum and do more to offset the energy cost of that building, that's what you would be able to do. We heard that through the last community engagement meeting, that that was a high priority for many people in the city to be as sustainable as possible. So that's trying to be energy conscious with that. There's also been a discussion, if we have a problem taking down the aquatic program, could we phase construction? So what you really see is no change in scope, but if you take longer to build this thing, it could, it's just cost more money. It's a pretty simple thing. That's again, another function of our estimator taking escalation and taking schedules and pushing them out. So I don't know if you can read the schedule very well, but again, part of, part of our discussion was to look at a conceptual schedule of what this would be. And there was a discussion about what wouldn't do we want construction to start? The feedback we got from the city, from Mark and his team was October of 2026. So this tries, starts to work backwards from that, just so you know how this was built. When you do that, that means we need to start schematic design phase in about January of 2025. Okay? So that's not immediate, but it's not too far away either, right? How many people are planning for Christmas already? It's right about that time. So January 2025 is when we would need to start schematic design. That gives us a two-month schematic design period, pretty standard, three months of what we call design development, where we take that design, the design and build upon that. We get engineers more involved, engineer systems, and then we get into about four months of doing construction documents. And that is, that's a package that gets ready to get submitted to the Division of the State Architect, is the jurisdiction we would need to go to along with the Health Department. And they will generally take about eight months to do their review and us to get approval on a project of this scale. Then working with Gil, allowing about four months for procurement with the city. And then that gets us to the October of 2026. You can see down there, option one is about estimating about a 16-month build with option two being about 18 months, little, little more time, just a little bit bigger of a move for the dirt, for the, for the pool itself. And I think that is the entire presentation. So, yep.
So as we know, the biggest challenge with either option will be the cost, which ranges from $28 million to over $40 million. At the same time, doing nothing is not a viable long-term option if we want to continue to have a pool since the existing facility is in disrepair and has a finite useful life. The five-year CIP does include $800,000 in each of the next two fiscal years, so totaling 1.6 million to pay for the design. But of course, we would need to know what option we are interested in pursuing. Additionally, the city manager has some new information to consider regarding the possibility of another public pool that would be funded in part by a third party.
Yes, thank you, Melissa. As the council is aware, for about the last year, we've had some parallel preliminary discussions with the owners of the Manhattan Country Club, which is a Bay Club. And we've had discussions about potentially having them build a pool in the parking lot just west of their facility in the city parking lot there that would have public access. We're having discussions the first week of June with them that we're going to have some conceptual discussions, maybe scope it out and see what develops from that. But preliminarily, they've said that they would be interested in building the pool and maintaining it and giving us a substantial amount of public access to it. Details need to be worked out on that, however. I mention this because obviously we don't have any funds available right now to even do option one here. And so it's very intriguing that perhaps the Bay Club would be willing to build us a facility that could be available for the community. But again, the devil will be in the details. So given the lack of funding, I would suggest that the council receive and file this report tonight. Let us go back, or direct us to go back to the Bay Club and come up with some of those conceptual designs and terms and conditions that we could bring back to the council and then factor into these discussions. Because I think this, this may be the quickest, most viable way for us to get a brand new pool in the community if we can come to an agreement with the Bay Club on this. And some of us are familiar with the El Segundo Pool, Continental Developments built that and are funding a good portion of that, and we're hoping that we can do something similar here. But again, I think this needs to factor in with the bigger discussion we're having tonight on where we go from here.
Okay. Given that information and your recommendation, I would still like to maybe just review some of the options, particularly, you know, if the Bay Club could be one pool, then it makes sense to, you know, remodel, you know, do the remodel for option one and have some questions on that. So is that agreeable?
Yep.
Colleagues?
Well, are we taking public input in all that?
We're going to have questions first, I think.
I understand that. Are we taking public input?
Right. Okay. So Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Honored. Okay, what our city manager said, if, if the Bay Club follows through and if they do build a pool and we don't spend a dime for it, good for us. This is the what if they do not do anything at all and they go sideways on us. So I'm still going to ask questions as if we're looking at option one or option two. So I'll ask Melissa Bryan the first question. Who's up first? In all the discussions you have with the groups, did any of the seniors, and I had two emails here about it, did the city council and staff ever discuss the option of heating the smaller pool?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Heating.
Heating the smaller pool?
Yes.
With option two?
Any option.
So that is a huge advantage of having two bodies of water because you are able to keep the smaller recreational pool warmer, which is what our water aerobics group prefers as well as the swim lessons. And then the larger pool, whereas more for the lap swimming and the competitive swimming, they prefer lower, lower temperatures. So
Discuss that.
We did.
Perfect. That's question one.
Part of it.
Part of it. Second part of it, second question is, I mean, it's a Bryan question. Did the estimator look at the cost of demo, the existing building versus a new building? I'm wondering if built in the 50s, why I'd want to try to renovate something built in the 50s as opposed to scraping it and building a brand-new Beg Pool building? Was that part of the estimation or a reason why? It wasn't discussed in the report why they looked at that versus scraping it?
It was. And I think Brad started to address that in terms of looking at the cost of option one, which is the major renovation of the existing building because that was part of the direction from council in August. And then option two is the new, new facility that did allow more efficient design and use of the space because it was starting with a blank canvas and that's the building on the north and then the two different pools.
Let me rephrase it. And option one?
Yes.
Did the estimate look at the reason why they thought they could renovate a building in the 50s versus scraping it in option one?
Did they look at it?
They look at it.
So that, that was the assign, I'm sorry, please, yes.
Yeah. So we didn't estimate, like, taking the whole building down and just building a very identical building to it. Option one really just focused on, we keep the building superstructure, but coming out of these types of studies are all these variations that we can get into. You know, like option one, like, let's keep the building, but maybe do a 35-meter pool there. You know, so we can start going into all those different variations.
But it was discussed, looking at demoing the existing building.
Yeah, it was discussed, but I think once we got into the cost, the actual conceptual design, it's let's, let's leave the building in place. So we're really dealing with the two options rather than option one A, B, C, it's option two B. So it started, it actually started unfolding that way. So we were trying to keep it focused. And then from here, we can do different options for sure, and looking at variations.
Got it. Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay.
And if I could just, just add one, one other point to that is, is the next phase, does, there's two months in there for schematic design, which is when you would make all of the final decisions about, but with where you're moving forward with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Protem Haworth?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback, or I'll ask Councilmember Montgomery, were you asking a question? Because sometimes it's cheaper to scrap something, even if you put it in the same footprint. I think that was, yeah, okay. And so in option two, the two pool plan, the building now moves to the north end of the lot, and it's much bigger than the other building. So I, I guess that's because of more locker, like, I'm trying to figure out, like, and I guess when we get to, if we were to get to conceptuals, we could write size it if we thought it was too big.
Absolutely. Right now, what you have in option one, your building is 5,700 square feet, almost 5,800. So the new building enclosed space is 7,100. So it's less than 2,000 bigger. I think one of the things of we as architects, we make that building look pretty big, though, just in the way it masses up, trying to be an entry. So you've gained about 1,500, 1,400 square feet in that, in the actual building. So it's not, it's not growing significantly, but it is trying to, it's trying, the bigger delta is probably in that, in the lifeguard area and then lifeguard training area, which is not, is not something we could fit into that existing shell.
Right.
Locker rooms are very similarly sized, and then you have more room for your utility and your mechanical spaces, so.
Okay, so there would be some, I mean, obviously, all this is stuff you worked out in the details. A couple other quick questions. When you, when we looked at the three, the optional add-ons, the Peck Avenue corridor improvements, those are the, the part, the upper parking lot. And so that is not included in option two, the 40.3 million dollars?
No, it would be an add-in to either scheme, either scheme.
Either scheme.
Either scheme.
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
Expanded solar, so that would be a decision, because I, I did attend via Zoom one of the community meetings, and, and community members said, yes, we want that, but then you have to figure out the cost benefit.
Yeah.
And to phase construction and, yeah, I mean, and, and Mr. Mayor, just to clarify what, what you were saying in the big, well, I'll wait till we're done, because I don't think we have to get there yet. So, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lesser?
I'm gonna go back a step and take a breath as to how we got here. And I'm not sure if this question is really directed at our principal engineer or our Parks and Rec director. What happens if our community takes no action with the existing pool? Can we have a review, it was discussed very quickly, a review of the current site conditions, which I don't think has been reported on as to why we are looking at these modernization studies? Who's in the best position to just summarize some of the conditions there?
Well, I, I think what you'll see in the full report, which again, is not in the presentation, the whole first section is about findings and site investigation. So it goes into the assessment of systems in your building, the site, the pool equipment, and all those various things. So I think that was kind of the impetus for us to have the baseline, to think that if you do something, there's really not a piecemeal way of looking at it, and you really have to go this far. And I, again, from HMC, we do a ton of DSA work, and because this sits on Manhattan Beach Unified, it's not a city project per se in city's jurisdiction, it's a state project. So the, the triggers that happen into facilities that house students are much more stringent than what happens in public buildings, maybe at your art center or something like that. So you start to get into those things where this building has to, if you're gonna do anything and touch this building, it will get a seismic retrofit, you know?
I do have some more questions, I think, for our principal engineer. My understanding is there are significant issues with the plumbing. We, we don't have the privilege to do nothing. Is that correct?
So correct. Principal Engineer Gil Gambilla. So the way we, it's definitely past its useful life. So the way we operate now is, is obviously if something breaks down, we go out and fix it here, whether it's the plumbing or electrical or whatnot on that. But then when you fix something here and over here, then you create weak links in between. Things are outdated, obsolete in terms of fittings and, and other things that just don't fit on that end of it. And then, for example, today we were, I was talking with some of the facilities crew, they need, we need to replace a water heater out there on that end of it. So the water heaters are larger nowadays and everything, but the space there is, is older, smaller, so it makes things harder. So things, when we do do those small Band-Aid repairs, they turn into bigger things, because we need to break, you know, break open walls or something like that on that end of it.
So it is conceivable that we may no longer have a community pool. Is that right?
Correct. If enough, enough of the systems go down, then we would have to shut down the pool, you know, in the interim until we, you know, figure out how to, you know, fix them.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question.
Sure.
Back to the, the concept. If this council, in conjunction with our community, decides that we only can afford to build one pool, presuming this opportunity with this third party does not pan out, how could we explore a supplemental size beyond the existing 25 feet, given that we've already now fully explored under your contract? The 25 foot and then the 35 meters?
Yeah. I actually think your, your baseline has been set for.
Yards.
Yeah. The, the baseline's been set for these studies. So I think we often get to this point where you study a couple things, you're like, but what about this variation? I think it's, it's actually, we have all this information built up that we can build on. So if you would say, I wanna do option one, but I want it to be, let's do one 35 meter pool that's shallow and deep, so it starts to accommodate a lot of our needs, if we know we have a big body of water for a 50 meter not too far away. Those are, we could go through multiple studies very quickly on that, very, very, and very, very easily.
Okay. Thank you. And then lastly, a question for the city manager. Just to confirm at this point, this is a receive and file, and if there was interest in exploring how other communities have funded their community pools, you'd suggest deferring that discussion? Thank you.
Come back with some funding options.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I'm next in line here. So we didn't talk much about funding, about, you know, or discuss the results of the survey with regards to people's appetite for, for, for paying for this. I did find something very interesting in there, that if the majority, 71% of the people are, said that, well, let's just raise the fees, that we'll pay for the, you know, that's what we're in favor of. But then when they were presented with the choice of either increasing their property taxes or increasing the sales taxes, that immediately dropped to, I believe, about 31%. So my question is this, is, is there a realistic, realistic number in which we could raise the fees in order, since that seems to have the most appetite? And what would those, what would the, the new fee structure look like? And balance that against also in the survey, the one reason they like Beg Pool is because it's inexpensive. So if it, we bring the costs up, then, you know, participation may go down. So can someone help me with, kind of taking a look at that?
So I, I think the suggestion to come back and have, have a larger funding discussion about the whole, whole project is, is a good one. I think raising fees would, would not be enough in order to pay for a project of, of this size. So we will need to think about the possibility of, you know, of bonds, of public-private partnerships, of other revenue ballot measures, and of fundraising. We certainly can talk about how, and again, I think City Manager Mo is suggesting that we do this at a future meeting, but how pools both El Segundo, Weisburn Aquatics, how their, El Segundo was able to, to fund construction of the plunge, which is their smaller community pool. We, we can talk about the, the way that those, those projects have, have been completed. And the survey that you're talking about was, was the, the 2022 survey, and, and that those answers are important to keep in mind, but it was before all of this, this work happened. And so we are in a little bit of a different place, and it's interesting talking to community members. Even last night, at the Parks and Rec Community Strategic Plan meeting, some people came in thinking, you know, one way, and after learning more about the project, felt differently after that conversation. So I think there is, is a lot more that, that needs to be talked about as a community to decide, you know, do we want a municipal pool or, or do we not? And, and what will it take in terms of investment to make that happen? Just remember, it's, you know, 60, over 60 years old, and we've put very little money into it in that, in that time. So if, if we still want a municipal pool, we need to, as a community, come together to, to pay for it.
Okay. I was also trying to drill down into the survey, just to, you know, and, and I asked this, and I, I really didn't receive an answer on it. But, you know, how many people consider it their main, consider Beg Pool to be their main pool? There's, you know, private pool options, there's private club options, there's, you know, there's swimming at the Miracosta Pool, they're swimming at the, you know, neighboring El Segundo and Redondo Beach Pools. So there's that old axiom, you know, if you build it, they will come. But where are they swimming now? I mean, where are people swimming now? Because.
So they are, and I do think in the, in the 2022 survey, there, there are lists of other, other locations that they use in addition to Beg. The Bay, Bay Club is one, Country Club, Hawthorne Pool, El Segundo, Weisburn Aquatics are, are the main ones in the nearby area that, that our swimmers and water polo players use. But I do want to say, in terms of the demand for Beg, as, as Mark kind of started the, the presentation with, sorry, Director Lehman, every registration day, parents get up before sex exams so that they're ready to register for, for the swim classes, for the, the swim team, for the summer camps. And sometimes all of those are gone by 6:03. That came up in our, our discussions last night with community members. And, and some were like, oh my gosh, I had forgotten that, because it, you know, they were on to another part of their lives, but it all came back. How difficult it is to, to get into the, the pool. So we know there's demand, and we know that demand will grow. It's not only just in, in Manhattan Beach, but even, you know, within 10, 10 to 15 miles, water is scarce. So we aren't worried about filling it if there's more water.
The, so I understand we're, we're under the jurisdiction now of the state architect? Or what was the code?
Division of State Architects.
Yeah, Division of State Architects. So that's a whole different set of rules that we have to, that we have to follow. Did, was there any kind of look into, since we want more water, and now we have this development too, with the other, you know, potential pool, of, of widening, you know, stay with the 25 yards, but make it wider so that we can go beyond the six lanes? And, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with the location, just from having used it so many years. There seems to be room to the west, and there seems to be room to the east. And if adding incrementally, I don't want to presume to cost estimate, if we add 30% more pool, you know, that it's gonna bring a cost up of 30%. But.
You'd still have to go through the DSA.
No, no, that isn't part of my question. You know, just the feasibility of that and.
For the first part of your question, there's definitely been a lot of interest in widening the pool. Right now, there are narrow lanes. I think there's seven feet and only six of them. And when you have a ladder and that, it makes it even tighter when you have multiple swimmers in a lane. So that would be very welcome, not only by, by, you know, communities, community members using it during city time, but definitely, we heard that also from the, the MBMS coaches for their classes, because they can get very tight within, within the footprint that is there now. In terms of estimates, I don't know if you have anything to add at this point, or it would need to be, please?
And I, I don't have a number, but that's, that's again, a, a jumping off point for any study, is like, we got this pool, but what if we just do this? And then we can, since we have the baseline of all the other information, we can get that very quickly. Even a site graphic that would show what it would do in option one or even in option two that has a single pool is another thing we could even look at.
All right. Okay. So. Thank you. And just, can you just review the, you know, the most common activities from the, from the result, from the results? I seem to think, you know, it's recreational play, lap swimming.
Right.
Swimming lessons, okay, which is park and recreation, swimming lessons.
It is, and swim team.
The required swim classes with MBMS.
Right.
Okay. What they re.
Junior lifeguard training is, junior lifeguard training prep is also a big one.
Okay.
And safety classes, yeah.
Uh, summer camp, there's a lot, they do a lot of fun things there. And then the swim, it mentioned swim team, is that presumably, is that MBMS's swim team, the Dolphins?
So that's a city, city program. And there's about a, it's a city of Manhattan Beach program, not, not the, not the school, and about 150 swimmers.
Okay.
But that's the one that fills up so fast. I was talking to our aquatic supervisor today, and he thinks he could double the size if we had the space for it, easily.
Okay, but, but that has nothing to do with the high school?
It does not. It's the local city's, city team. Yeah.
Uh, I have more questions, but I'm gonna pass it on.
Well, plus water polo teams, et cetera, et cetera, so.
No, I had a trivial question, and it's not worth asking.
Okay. Trivial pursuit or?
Okay, I'll stump Melissa. I'll see if I can stump Melissa. So who was Foster Beg?
Oh.
So he, he, I, it is a little bit stunted, but I believe he was superintendent of the school district, is that correct?
Right, so he was superintendent of the school district years ago, and he had the middle school named after him over there. But I have to wonder why, if we're moving forward with a pool for the next century, why it would be named Beg Pool? The school was named for, I would think that would be a municipal pursuit to.
Well, we can't fit the word Napolitano.
Well, for a, for a, for a city that, you can. But for a city, I measured, a city who, that abhors naming things for people, because we floated it before and it's been shot down, and just, you know, why continue on with that name instead of something Manhattan Splash, whatever it might be?
Do you think there's a family member of the Begs in town? But there have been some other suggestions also, so.
The, the middle school's site is still named for him, it's just, it doesn't, seems weird to me that we're gonna sink 30 million, anyway.
Well, I thought you were gonna ask about the shark mural, if it could go there, so.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Okay.
Your Honor, just a question to the city manager. Hey, Bruce, any timeline, I know theoretically this whole thing is receive and file, we're not taking the action tonight, but any timeframe do you have in your head, when we're gonna answer back from the Bay Club? Is it next month? Is it 90 days? Do we have a timeframe?
We're meeting June 6th, and we have three hours set aside, so I think some conceptual ideas will float from that fairly quickly, that we could come back, probably in July, to the council with, with some level of detail.
Okay, July of this year?
Maybe, probably not costs, but yes, July of this year.
Thank you.
And I thought of something else.
Council, Mayor Protem Haworth?
Yeah. Melissa, I mean, you, when, the mayor was asking questions from the 2022 survey, and, you know, you, you mentioned that that was way before we had concepts, and that way before we really understood just how bad and non-functional, really, it's barely functional the pool is. So I guess maybe it's a question for Bruce, sorry. I just, I, I was glad you brought that up, because we could, we could receive and file this, but we could give direction to do a new survey based on, I mean, we, because, funding's a question, funding's a question. We talked about funding, but let's start to get some, if there's, if there's willingness, whether it's this concept, option one and, or option two, whether it's something else.
That's a great idea.
I think that that would be, you know, we could, we could do that. I didn't, well, didn't know if we could do that tonight, that's the question I'm asking.
Of course we can, do whatever.
No, I wasn't trying to, oh, for God's sake.
If, if I could just make a.
My brother.
A comment about that, is, is, is the questions I was asking about, that's in the 2022 survey, is the usage. You know, and that basically is gonna be the same pool, you know, so here we are in 2024, so the usage numbers will be, will be the same.
It's a different, that's a different survey, it's a political, it's, right?
True North.
All right. Sorry. State Councilmember Napolitano, I was asking you about, anyway.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So my question would be to the council, do we want to go out for a new survey? Because this is what we talked about before, Mayor Protem Haworth and I, as to, okay, yeah, we're not talking about usage, we're not talking about who did the survey, we're talking about, hey, folks, last time we surveyed you, you had no idea what the cost of this thing is. And you had no idea what the cost of this was compared to outdoor dining that's in the same mix. And by the way, we're gonna have to do Lot 3 as well, not that anyone cares about that, but they should know that there are certain capital improvement projects that, you know, we can't necessarily afford to do all of them, certainly not all of them quickly. And so, you know, we can talk about bonds, we can talk about that, but do people want to bond themselves? Do people want a 40 million pool? And that goes to the question, I know we haven't had public input yet, and I'd love to have that, but there are a number of questions in doing this and moving forward with it that we don't have answers for, that we would be shooting blindly on if we don't know that, hey, you know, is Beg worth it? You've got lots of problems. If we had a blank piece of paper, would we be putting a pool there since we don't own the property? Since we have to deal with the Division of State Architect, which is a pain, but I used to deal with them before, uh, in my prior job. Uh, ongoing maintenance on a piece of property that we don't own, uh, where we have to deal with, um, uh, you know, the redo of the field usage agreement. How does that play into it? Um, the idea that the parking is reduced below, there's no way we're gonna do this and not do that Peck Avenue add-on. You know, is, is this the best place to put a pool? It's back in the middle of, behind a main thoroughfare, it's tucked away, you know, is Beg the place we would do a new pool? I have a hard time seeing it. I think that we need to go out to the public and, and let them know, this is what it costs. Is it worth it to you for us to do this or not? And by the way, if we do, is outdoor dining part of that?
Right.
You know, 20 million for the sidewalks fixes there, the participation from restaurants or non-participation? What's the, cause we need to know, we want more information on that anyway. We need to tie something all together in a survey for folks where they have some real dollar estimates. These dollars are supposed to be very accurate, as we've been told several times tonight. Then we need to get some better information out there because maybe they don't want to, the city to pay $40 million for two new pools at a site that we don't own, that has a lot of site issues that we have to fix, that, again, we said about half the price was gonna be on just fixing the site anyway.
Or maybe they do, but we would find that out.
They do, but we find out.
Which was your idea?
I'm not saying that.
I know that, I know, but I want to give you the credit for that.
I'm just saying, but we wanted to expand on that whole thing though.
Yeah.
Your honor, I'll follow up behind it. I, I, there's two things, great idea about the survey, couldn't agree more. Two things people forget, I know that staff put a number, half a million dollars in fixing up Beg Pool 20 years, I guarantee you it's higher than that. When I was in council, '06, '07, '08, we plugged with long price days. Forget the locker room, we were doing, prepared to stop the leaks.
Yep.
At Beg Pool. And the decking on the sides, and that was 350 back in 19, or 2006 dollars. You had half a million dollars more to that, you're starting to get the real money. And at Steve's point, there's no idea, everybody forgets, you build it, you have to maintain it. Who's doing that? We are, you are. Two pieces of that. And the second, third thing is, what about the entrance and exit on one end? No one's even brought that up.
Well, it has to be redone.
It's one end, it's discussion a part of that. So I know theoretically, we're not taking action on it, I get all that, but these are questions to come back with. Has anybody talked to MBUSD about, hey, you got a second gate over there, why are you forcing all the traffic to go this way? As part of that Peck Avenue study, why should I have it going one way in and one way out? So those are all questions to be asked. The cost part of it is the huge part of it. See, I'm with you, where do we want the dollars to go? Do you want it focused on this, or on this, or on this? So that's a major survey to find out. And 2025 dollars won't be the same in 2027 dollars. So I'll stop there.
Okay, so colleagues, we need to get public comments.
Yes, we do.
As well. Uh, so if we could, uh, have people come down, you'll have two minutes for public comments?
Yeah.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
My name is Jerianne Rousseau, and this is just kind of off the top of my head, so I didn't really prepare anything, but, um, I totally agree with it, this is the wrong site. It concerns me a ton that we don't own the land. The amount of money that we're talking about spending is significant, and it just seems like there has to be a better location where the city does own the land. Concerned about that ongoing, every 10 years renegotiation of how that, uh, pool area gets used with the school district, so, um, totally agree with doing a survey, talking, you know, really laying it out so that people understand. I was at the Parks and Rec thing last night, and what really struck me about some of the people who were, uh, talking about the pain that they're feeling right now, they're not gonna be in that same situation by the time this all gets done, right? So, you know, they have the children of the certain age right now, and they may be thinking, yeah, let's spend the 40 million dollars, but by the time it's all said and done, their kids are gonna be off to college by that point, and they may not even be spending time in the pool. And so, you know, that concerns me a little bit too, that the people that are really advocating for spending the money aren't thinking about the fact that they're not gonna reap the benefits of it, right? You know, for, in the situation that they're experiencing right now.
Okay, thank you. Next, anybody else? And if you want, and if you want to speak, uh, please come on down and, and sit in these chairs that are right down here.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I've been part of the water aerobics program for about 10 years now. I don't know if you're aware that four days a week, all through the year, through every season, the pool is filled with water aerobics. Most of the people participating are seniors, not all, it's not exclusively seniors. So I get really nervous when I hear about fees being increased for people who are living on fixed incomes. I also would like to really quickly address the parking situation. I, I didn't hear mentioned here acknowledgement of the fact that that parking lot is shared with athletic fields that are in use both for softball now or base, uh, little league and soccer in the fall. And when I come into the pool, which is after school is out, Peck is already, there's already all the parking on Peck is filled, so that's...
Okay, great. And your name, please?
Laura Dodson. Laura Dodson.
Thank you, Laura.
Hi, I'm Chris Davis. Um, I learned to swim at Big Pool when I was four, and, uh, my kids learned to swim there, and I swim there four days a week. Uh, I'm in the water aerobics program. Today, when I, when I went to class, the pool noodles had been chewed on by rats, only half the showers work. It's unsafe for it to walk around the pool. We've had members of our class slip and fall. I would just love to see it kept as a recreational pool, fix what's broken, don't add stuff that we don't need. It's, it's, it's recreational, it's for the kids in the summer, it's for the kids who are learning to swim. Uh, parking is always gonna be an issue. Uh, and, um, council, council member Napolitano, I'm sorry, I just, I just have to add, should we change the name of Polywog Park because there aren't Polywogs there anymore?
Good idea.
Big Pool is, is a historical thing. I, I hate losing all the stuff in Manhattan Beach that's historical. Um, and I know that I'm over 60 and, and mostly invisible to most of the things that go on in the city, but I would hate to see the pool tacked on to restaurant, outdoor dining or any of the other things. Can we just do the minimum and repair the building, which I agree should probably be raised, and I would love to know what the difference in cost is. Uh, anyway, that's all, we just want a place to swim. Thank you.
Safe.
Thank you.
So do the Polywogs.
Thursday night, good evening.
Uh, my name is John Arizaga. I live near that Peck entrance, uh, that you're talking about opening, so I'd be concerned about the traffic and parking as well in that area. But just a, a brief comment, um, I'm very reassured by your comments about maybe taking a pause on this, um, for a s- additional site survey and getting more input. I was a little alarmed when I first heard these two options as being it's this or that, and there's obviously a 1A, there's a 1B, there's a 2 minus, there's a 2 plus, there's a lot of things to look at. And just also briefly, being a neighbor in that area, um, I'm a little surprised that I didn't hear about this, like, this is the first time I've seen these options, and I'm sure other residents would really appreciate what it looks like, what these concepts are looking at, and what these costs are. So getting that information out to the public and getting some feedback would be very appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, John.
Hello, my name is Scott Janofsky. Um, I taught all three of my kids to swim in that pool, great pool. I think major repair would be fine, you don't need new buildings, you need major repair there, the decks, the pool, uh, there's many companies out there that do the repairs, so I agree with Stephen Napolitano that we should just do repairs and not anything major, and don't tie it into the downtown restaurants. I don't know how that gets all tied in together, but spending that kind of money in that pool doesn't make any sense since the city doesn't own that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Great. Commissioner.
Hi, just a few comments. Again, it's Hillary Rosen. My son is, swims at Beg twice a week. Um, I don't even want to go in that building and go to the bathroom. It's really in terrible condition, but I also don't think it needs to be a country club, it doesn't need to be such a fancy, modernized building, it's just a basic place, safe, like the other people were saying, safe place to swim, affordable is very important also, and, um, that parking right now is really bad, it doesn't look like it would be ADA accessible if, in any of the scenarios that were presented either. Um, I know it's on a hill, I, I don't know all the, the details, the political details about it being the school owns, so, I don't care about the name either, just want a safe, clean place to be able to go ba- I don't even want to go to the bathroom, like, when, waiting for my son to get out of the pool, but there'll be six or seven kids in a lane, I don't know how much instruction is really happening because it's so crowded, but he still wants to go. That's it.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? How about on Zoom, Martha?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll close public comments. Mayor Potem Haworth?
Thank you, your honor. Um, so let's remember kind of how we got to this spot. Um, and I think our council member Leser was trying to, uh, get, illustrate from staff why there is a need for a new pool. Okay, not just some patches, but a new pool. It is past its useful life, it's not safe. Um, and let's also remember that we need more water. There is, i- if, if registration opens at 6:00 AM and 6:03, maybe it's an exaggeration, let's say by 7:00 AM it's full for classes for the summer. That's unacceptable. Look at our community, look at this community, what do we pride, you know, we pride ourselves on, you know, being, um, athletic and, and safe, you know, water safe for the ocean. Um, we have Olympians that come from this community, we have, you know, outside groups that are made up of residents, you know, the water polo teams, the water polo clubs, this is in the evening, this is past when the kids have used it, past when the water aerobics have used it. These kids, um, who get to college on scholarships because they play water polo, we, it is, it's past its useful life and we, there is a demonstrated need for more water. And I, I don't see what we're doing is taking a pause. Uh, we always, as council, have, um, the right, uh, the duty to look at all the options before us and say, pick and choose, and pink curtains here, green curtains there, whatever, you know, option, option two, but smaller this, move it here, do that. We are always going to be responsible and diligent and say, make these changes, do that, let's, let's reconfigure it. Okay? The reason there's a pause is because we have this incredible opportunity potentially with Continental Development, the Bay Club, for potentially this other site.
There's it is, right there.
Yeah. Mic drop. For this other site that, that would, that we could, you know, potentially to, you know, work together with. And so we do need to, um, before we make any decisions on any of these options, we do need to hear about how viable that is. Um, and I'm not even gonna opine on whether, well, if we, if Continental's gonna do this, do we still need then to do option one? You know, like, there's all kinds of things that could come into play, so let's wait and get that information, but, um, I do think that Napolitan's, Councilmember Napolitano's idea of a poll, it's, it's not just a survey, it's a political poll to see what the community will, will handle funding, is something that we could start to build and, and allocate funding for and, and do. And as far as tying things together, I understand, oh, don't, don't smush it all together, I, I sort of get that, but what a poll would do is, would understand the community's appetite for certain things. Uh, because we've talked in this chamber before about outdoor dining, 20 million dollars to do widened sidewalks and, and renovate and rejuvenate downtown. By the way, it's not just for outdoor dining, that's a lot of money. New parking garage, 30 million dollars, that's a lot of money. Um, and so this, a, what I would suggest to my colleagues is that a poll is gonna ask about different options. Maybe you only want outdoor dining and you don't want a pool, ma- you know, it'll, it will figure all that stuff out, and you may end up figuring out, there's a big appetite for this and not this. So we would act on that data. So I wanna, I, I wanted to explain why I think you could potentially throw some things together in that survey, just to see. But I do think we need more water. I don't think it's just a question of, of fixing that up. I, I, you know, and I know the city doesn't own the land, but we residents do. It's, uh, you know, I, I do think that it depends on a partnership, but we're all, it's gonna be a win-win, and it would be carefully contracted out and negotiated, um, I'm comfortable with that. I want to point out that even if we were to do nothing, pretty soon, it, it, we wouldn't be able to use it because of ADA, right? That, that road, like, we can't just leave it alone, we can't, even if we do option one, remember, so much of the cost is about making it ADA compliant, and when they say that, they don't just mean making doors wider or some ramps, they mean rebuilding that road. Um, like, one question, two questions. Um, Pac, somebody mentioned, there's not that many parking spots on Pac, and there may not be, but there would be an improvement there that would add parking spaces. So, um, I am in favor of, I, I understand not making a decision on option one, option two, allocating funding for conceptual design tonight, that wouldn't make any sense, but I'd like to suggest to my colleagues that we consider, um, starting the discussions on some sort of community-wide poll. Poll, poll on the pool, which I am still very much...
A pool poll?
A pool poll, say it. And, and I would be remiss, I mean, first of all, I wanted to also say it was a terrific presentation and I really appreciate the report, and I want to thank the Parks and Recs commissioners who put in an incredible amount of work to make this even discussable. So thank you. So, colleagues, take it away.
Okay, Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, your honor. And the points were made, everybody heard us tonight. It's functionally obsolete, fails, fails to meet any public safety requirements. Forget ADA for a second, it fails everywhere else. You mentioned Hillary, anything else you've seen of that pool going on for years? People don't want to get out of their cars, they're going to bathrooms. It's not just you, others. Lori McCarthy, we've been talking about this since 2006, that's how far I go back, talking about this. This is not new, folks. We've been paying for this pool, cities have been paying for this pool since 2006.
I was on the school board.
Bruce is back in finance, Amy's in the school board. This isn't, uh, this isn't, we've been band-aiding it all along. People said, well, well, just keep doing what you're doing, deck the pool, just keep it as it is. You cannot keep it as it is, impossible. Costs us more to do what it is now. We failed everything else. We've gotta go back and look at what, I don't even know, maybe Pope Bruce could tell us. I have no idea, Bruce, what we spend annually, or every two years on the pool. Does anybody know? No idea. Well, we're doing it, so we're not escaping the cost just because you don't want to keep it the way it is, nothing escapes it. The presentation was great, great, we know we're in a hole, we gotta stop digging. So what do you want us to do? So I think part of what your idea, Amy, is to bring back the idea of a poll, I love that idea, but also with it, what do we spend annually on pool maintenance as is? And I know it's more than half a million dollars in, in the last 10 years. I mean, '06, we spent 350 on it, so I know it's gotten higher than that. But what would it cost us to redeck it and make the bathrooms safe and actually have showers that work? And carve out two ADA stalls? And we could buy, how long would that last us? Till it falls down? What is that number gonna be? Then what do we do? Someone talked about we're gonna lose the community pool, I think David mentioned it, we'd be without a pool. So what would you rather have? No pool or a pool that we have to suffer with and go by a little bit with new bathrooms, new decking, stop the leaks? How long would that last us? Guild probably retired by that time. But I mean, I'm not sure, that's my biggest, I'm gonna understand that. We can do all the little things to keep with the Band-Aid, but fix up the ma- things we can fix up now, regardless of what Bay Club does, if and when they do anything at all, at least we can do something with it to make it, A, useful, B, attractive, and C, safe, all at the same time. So, and when you come back with a poll idea, I think part of that recommendation is to have us look at what the cost is to fix, maintain, and repair in the short term. I'll stop there. Thank you, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you, your honor. Of course, I can't let this go. Yes, there's still Polywogs at Polywog Park. But I brought, I brought up the name for a very good reason, though, is that's because if you've been following this, what we've had is a group of residents come together to start a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to raise money, and one of the things they were tasked with was rating, raising money for this pool. So I could very well see if someone wants to give a million, $2 million to it, they're going to expect some naming rights to it. And that was something that they would want to trade off for the money that they, and, you know, why is this being tied together with things like outdoor dining and stuff like, because it costs money, they all cost money. And either the city pays for it, which means the residents pay for it, or the residents[1795.66] pay for it, which still means the city pays for it. But it's going to come out of, directly out of property taxes on the general obligation bond if the residents show support to do that. But if the residents don't show support to that, just like they didn't in building the police fire facility, then the city will have to take it on itself, if the city chooses to, and, which is still going to be money that, that is probably for $30 million, 30-year bond, at least 1.5 million a year, and that we're going to have to set aside just to pay that bond obligation and nothing else. And right now, we don't have an extra million and a half dollars coming in. So to cover that, something else is going to be impacted. We just passed the stormwater, which is good, but should all that money, you know, that, that's the money that we want to use towards added police, added fire, added Parks and Rec stuff. All that should go to a pool? I'm not sure that the public really means to do that yet and without a poll. And on top of that, we've had discussions of outdoor dining. That's going to, and widening the sidewalks, that's something the city would take on. And again, where does that money come from? So we're talking about additional debt. The city also, already pays a lot towards pensions, towards debt for this building or the police fire still, the library still, that comes under a different fund. But we're putting out a lot of money and not getting it back to cover all these expenses. So yes, there's going to be an additional debt service on whatever we do. Either the residents will take that on in their property taxes, the city takes it on through bond, and again, though, that's going to impact services. And what it means is, what goes first? The pool or outdoor dining? If you do both at the same time, we're talking about maybe $50 million, maybe $40 million in total, if we don't do anything but just revamp the pool as it is and not add a 35-meter to it. So there's lots at play here. And now that we have numbers and we can apply those numbers, I think an informed decision, the poll was great that we had before, yes, there's support for a pool. But sometimes people, they want that, took an expensive car, but then they realize they can only afford this car, or they only want to pay for that car. And I think that informed decision requires that we go out and ask the, the residents again, that, okay, a pool, yes, but at what cost? At this cost, at this cost, are you willing to do that? And are you willing to do that at this site that the city doesn't own? And by the way, how does that play in terms of priorities with things like parking downtown, which would be Lot 3, outdoor dining, or any other capital improvement projects that we need to assess? Because these are the, the major things that have been topics of discussion in this town for the last several years. Pool goes back a long ways. Outdoor dining goes back a long ways. There's lots of stuff that we want to do. We have limited resources, but unlimited wants and needs, and this is one of those. And I would love to see us do something, but I also want to see the right conditions. If we have, if we can improve our conditions by doing it on property that either we own or we can control to the utmost, I think that's a bonus. Not going through the state architect, that's a bonus. Not having to do all, whole other bunch of site improvements that aren't related to the pool itself, that's a bonus, too. So again, support going out for an additional survey, given the dollar amounts. We'll have that crafted by our survey folks and brought back to us for consideration. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lesser?
In the coming months, not years, city, the city is going to be faced with whether or not to make capital improvements to the pool or close it. We're going to have to come to some decisions related to the existing pool while as we continue to discuss what we're going to do about a pool. So I worry, as much as I'm supportive of another poll, I'm supportive, of course, of exploring the option with third parties to purchase, rather, build, rather, excuse me, a community pool. I worry that while as we explore all these other options, we're going to have to make improvements to our existing pool, if we want to have a community pool. And maybe the decision is we don't. We're willing to face our community and say, oh, too much money. Really can't improve it, so we really need to close our community pool. I, for one, would not support that. So as a result, I'm in favor of some form of dual-track. This has been presented now as a receive and file. Certainly, we want to give staff time to explore an option to have third parties construct a new pool. But I think we also have to have a fallback here. And there has to be an examination of what we need to do in the short term to keep our existing pool open while as we continue to explore our options. So that's what I would support moving forward, and I'm not sure I see a motion may be made. But I think we have to take immediate action. The state of the pool is disastrous. It poses imminent public health and safety challenges for our community. So while as we're talking about all these future options, we have an immediate need to take action.
Thank you. I'm going to try to keep this short. The other thing looming here is the school district is considering putting a $200 million bond measure on the November ballot. So we saw Measure A went down as far as for the partial tax for the schools. Measure MB just barely passed by one percentage point over the two-thirds for $225 a month. We would be looking at, the school bond is, got a lower threshold of 55%, but there's no senior exclusion. And Measure MB never would have passed, and everybody has to admit it, would never have passed if there was not a senior exclusion to it. So there's a lot of demand coming for taxing, you know, vehicles to, to make such improvements. And all of them have a great need. We went through ad infinitum, the, you know, the downtown dining, parking structure number three, you know, this pool, we, you know, there's only so much that our residents are going to go ahead and, and agree to. And if they don't agree to it, you know, then, then we're essentially stuck. I agree. The pool's important. I meant to ask a question, I'll, I'll, I'll just ask it, but I don't expect an answer is, you know, the pool was there, so did the swimming become a requirement for the middle school because the pool was there? Like, for, in other words, could they be transported to another site for their swimming requirements? Or just have the swimming requirements be voluntary after-school type thing? So we got, you know, that question to decide as well. So these are all big-dollar projects that we've heard. I want to see the, you know, the poll. I really dug into this, you know, into this survey, and it was very clear, raise the fees, but don't raise my taxes. You know, but then raise the fees and then it's not affordable, which is what it makes, which is what makes the pool attractive. So let's, let's do the polling, let's bring it back. I don't know how those people keep that pool together, you know? I walked by there again this, you know, this Sunday. We used it a lot as, you know, when our kids were growing up. And not much has changed, except everything seems to be wheezing, you know, a little bit. And I just can, can just imagine what the pipes, you know, what, what condition they're in. So I do like the idea of some sort of contingency plan to, or dual-track, you know, to study them both. So, Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason why we all brought up the condition of the pool, not just from the residents that said it, because we've all seen it before for years. So of course we want to maintain it. My question was, how much does it cost you to maintain it? And what I have in here tonight is, and maybe you can go back and find out, from Dr. Bose, NBC, number one, do they have any idea in their head on the $200 million bond, are they thinking about any kind of repairs to the pool at all? And if I'm them, I'm going to say, heck no, because you guys should take care of it. Why would they take care of it themselves? We're taking care of it. So that's one. And number two, a letter from that says, hey, we, NBC Board, do approve the city that they want to do option one or option two. We're in favor of you doing that. They haven't signed up for anything yet. It's their land. They could tell us, nope. Don't need more than Band-Aids, we're good with it. So we're getting ahead of ourselves on both options there. But in the meantime, we need to find out what it would cost us to maintain as it is and go do decking, the bathrooms, and the showers and all that, so that we all know. Next time we come back, we find that the county club says, nope, we're passing on it. What will it cost us, to David's point, to maintain it for another two or three years on our own? And let's see what happens. Nothing further.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Horwath?
Thank you. I got something in my eye just as it's my turn, so if I start crying, it's not for effect.
It's part of my motion, Your Honor, to add a felony amendment to your motion.
Well, I, you don't even, yeah, sorry. Hold on a second. I, I have a motion. I just want to correct a few things or, you know, challenge in my way that I have to. I don't, I think it's, it's not, I, I don't think it's really realistic to think that the school district or the middle school is going to transport kids to a different site for swimming. They may say, well, we're not going to offer swimming. I don't know that it's, you know, required by the state. And I, you know, we can disagree about whether that's a good thing or not, but given the current, and, and every budget that's ever been passed there, they're, they're not going to be able to bus kids to a pool. So that's, let's just squash that. You know, when we talk about the school district is going out, they're not necessarily going out. They're doing a poll right now, too, about this bond. And a bond is a 50, you know, majority plus one. It's not 65% or, you know, like a parcel tax. But I do think that, obviously, if, if they, if they go out ahead of us and are able to do this, that would affect the poll results. So, you know, I think if, my motion is going to be to hire, what is it, FM3, to do this poll. They're working with the school district as, probably as well, I would assume. So if it, we would get their results before we went out, so we would know what's going to happen. I mean, if, if they're going to go out in November, I doubt people are going to say, oh, sure, you know? I mean, that would, that would impact things, by the way. I, I mean, anyway. So this is a dual-track to me, as Councilmember Lesser said. And a dual-track is, my motion is to do a pool poll. And I think our city manager has heard our discussion and knows the direction to give to the consultants for the different types of options. Do a pool poll. Keep, you know, this, discussions going with Continental. This, to me, I don't want, this report isn't sitting on a shelf. I support a pool, some sort of pool concept going forward. Do the pool poll, but also to Councilmember Montgomery's idea, find out what it's going to cost to keep it safe right now. I, I predict it could be a few hundred thousand dollars a year going forward, which seems like we're throwing good money after bad. Thank you, Steve, for, or Councilmember Napolitano, for a second. I also want to point out that there could be options going forward with the school district where we do a long-term lease, where, you know, we do run it, stuff like that could happen. But that's my motion for now. I see this as moving forward, and there you go.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
I just had a question about timing, Mayor Protem. And that is, given that the city staff are going to be reaching out regarding the third-party option, what is your thought about the timing as to when the poll would go out? Because obviously, we want to move with some urgency. On the other hand, if there might be a third-party option, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what the timing might be.
I, I would...
I would suggest that we defer to the consultant who should know what the best timing is.
I was going to say, I would defer to the consultant who would understand all of that.
Exactly.
Good idea.
Thank you.
It's like, I heard it here, but it spoke here. Okay. All right.
Keep it going.
So we have a, a motion to accept doing the pool poll, deferring to the consultants when would be the best place, or best timing of that. And then to Councilmember Montgomery's to find out the cost to keep the pool operating in the meantime for the next two to three years.
Safely. With needed repairs, safely, yes.
Yeah.
Got it?
Okay. So the motion's by Mayor Protem Amy Horwath and seconded by Councilmember Napolitano. Can we have a voting screen, please?
Motion passes 5-0.
Easy, please. Can we take about a 10-minute break, please?
Sure.
Take a dip in the pool? Yeah. Take a dip in the pool?
8:35? 8:35?
Oh!
... So, as I mentioned, they met multiple times to develop these recommendations for both the memorial as well as the Memorial Day event. And for the memorial for the fallen, they provided recommendations for purpose, process, design, and location. So, beginning with the purpose, the memorial for the fallen is to remember and commemorate service members who died while on active military duty in service to our nation. The memorial will recognize service members who were born, raised, lived in, enlisted from, or in some other way significantly associated with Manhattan Beach. For the process, the committee developed an application and approval structure. This would include a first step of approving the current estimate of 21 individuals that were identified by Mr. McCauley after extensive research. Moving forward, an application process will be reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission with recommendations to the City Council for final approval. And then additional names could be added over time on an annual basis. For the design, the commission wanted to keep the memorial simple. There were a number of attached... Or the attached samples, thank you so much, obelisk examples. And again, you know, National Memorial, I believe this was Inglewood, again, just various samples, even to the street-identifying obelisk markers. So they're really... They're open to various structures. I think this was kind of the design that stuck with the committee. They do like marble or similar finishes. They're open to general recognition or individual names on it. They're also open to having a smaller, separate pillar or obelisk for each branch of service. They would include the name, rank, branch of service, dates of birth, and death for each service member. And also potentially include graphics or symbols such as flags, eagle, star, or the branch of service. And then they would also like to have some type of process to where it would be easy to add additional names in the future. Also, they talked about a separate non-intrusive sign or plaque to explain the memorial with a single QR code or link to all the bios, including service members association within the city of Manhattan Beach. And then if we can move to the next slide, moving on to possible locations. So the committee does recommend a... One of the three locations in the Civic Center Plaza. It's central and visible for the community, provides a somber, dignified, and quiet civic location. It's accessible for ADA and older adults. There's convenient parking, appropriate for reflection and Memorial Day ceremonies, and the size can accommodate a larger group of people. An alternate location could be Veterans Parkway near Veterans Monument. However, the committee, again, does recommend a location, one of these three locations in the Civic Center Plaza. And so, developing these concepts, staff could work with the Cultural Arts Commission, if directed, to draft an RFP to design the memorial and bring the top designs for City Council review. Moving on to Memorial Day event options, the committee developed recommendations for a ceremony in addition to the previous City Council direction on a number of event enhancements. So they did spend a lot of time looking at a number of local and regional Memorial Day events, and they landed on proposing a ceremony very similar to the Veterans Day memorial event or Veterans Day monument event. So again, a variety of speakers, podium, flags, community groups. And staff anticipates a 2025 start date for the Memorial Day event if approved. So for this year, City Council has already directed staff to provide a number of Memorial Day event enhancements. These will include American flags placed along either side of the strand, or excuse me, on the strand either side of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, American flags placed throughout Polywog Park, and American flags at various street locations throughout the city. And as directed by council, they would be installed two days prior to each event and removed two days after. And these events include Memorial Day, Independence Day, Veterans Day, Patriot Day, and Salute to the Troops at Polywog Park. Further, council directed to have a wreath placed at Veterans Monument for Memorial Day. And the last item was a "Thank You Veterans" street banner to be placed in a prominent downtown location. So we do have that reserved, but I did want to note that we had heard from Mr. McCauley and other veterans that the banner would be appropriate for Veterans Day. However, they do not recommend hanging the banner for Memorial Day, but we are seeking City Council direction on that item. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that City Council discuss and provide direction on both the memorial for the fallen and the Memorial Day event.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Lesser?
Director Layman, I wanted to follow up on an exchange you and I had with regard to the proposed locations. With regard to location number three, which is the furthest to the north, closest to the upper-city parking lot, there, on a site inspection, I noticed there is quite a lot of infrastructure there with regard to an irrigation box that's at least four feet tall. And I guess I want to confirm what the plan would be of staff, even though we are far from choosing a design, choosing a location. But I'm just wondering, is that a realistic site? Because it would entail some additional expense, would it not?
Correct. And thank you for identifying that. We took a closer look today. And the box, it is, you know, fairly sizable. It can be moved within that landscaped area. We did speak with Public Works, and they put a general cost estimate of approximately $1,000. And you could move it, you know, at the very back of that site. And it is a large enough site to accommodate that. However, if you did move it out of that planner box, it could be exponentially more expensive.
More broadly, as to the location, having it in the Civic Center Plaza as opposed to, perhaps proximate to the Veterans Memorial, help articulate just what the expectation would be of how this space would be used. Because on the one hand, it would be for solemn reflection for those throughout the year, but it also would be used for a larger gathering, similar perhaps to our veterans' gathering. So it would need to accommodate a larger number of people. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other... Any other questions? So I have a question. So, thank you, and to the commission for this. I think it's very important. And so we got Memorial Day, we've got Veterans Day, and then Patriot Day. But how about Armed Forces Day in terms... And it doesn't have to be as, you know, these will all be proportional demonstration or, you know, celebrations. But, you know, Armed Forces Day is active military duty, as you may know. So just, we're wondering if we could... So has that... Has thought been given to that?
We have not discussed that.
Okay.
And for clarification, would that be for, in addition to hanging the flags at those locations, or further exploration for potential future events?
Well, I would say hanging the flags, at least initially, and then future events. I agree with you on the "Thank You Veterans," you know, is to just only have that one versus Memorial Day banner.
Only have that on Veterans Day, not on Memorial Day. Thank you, veterans.
Yeah. Right. Yep. Okay. Great. Any other questions? No? Seeing none, public comment? Comment... Comments?
Hello, my name is Heather Kim. I just want to thank you, Mayor, for your admirable patriotism. You're a role model for all of us. I think acts of patriotism by displaying American flags really warms my heart. No other flag is more unifying, as it is the only flag that represents all of us. And I am disappointed to say at my daughter's school, for some reason, they don't even do the Pledge of Allegiance. But, and I'm sad for this generation to grow up without feeling this sense of pride to be an American. I hope that our city continues to do as many things as we can to honor those who have given their lives for our freedom, and for those who have served and are still serving, so that we can enjoy, really, this very privileged life that we live. America is the greatest country on earth. And I really appreciate every effort that you guys make to celebrate all of those people and to celebrate our country. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Well, Mark touched on a lot of stuff I was going to say. But basically, service in the armed forces, protecting our nation, is inherently risky, especially in wartime, but also during times of peace. And in the past, some young people volunteered for military service, as do all current service members now. But during wartime, men were drafted and compelled to join by law and a lottery. But volunteer or draftee, they all served. And we're fortunate in our community because we've lost relatively few members of our community during the conflicts of the last century and this century. Some died in battle, and some were just unfortunate, but they all died in service to the nation. And I don't think there's any question that their names should be memorialized. Private Llewellyn Jenkins was the only son of the first Manhattan Beach City Clerk, and he died of injuries from barracks fire during World War I. Seaman Hugh Jones went down on the USS Arizona when Pearl Harbor was attacked. And Marine Corporal Hal Cook was killed just a couple hours later on the island of Wake. In total, there are about 22 young men who, all together, who died from our city. They all served, and their names deserve to be remembered. The appropriate place for this memorial is the City Hall Plaza. It's relatively peaceful and secure at the... And at the heart of our city government is the rightful place of honor for servicemen of our community who lost their lives. It doesn't conflict with the Veterans Monument, which is a whole different group of individuals. But I do hope that council will move forward with the project for a Memorial Day dedication. Obviously, not this Memorial Day, but perhaps Memorial Day next year. I see my time is up, so thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service to our country. Anybody else? Seeing none? Martha, on Zoom?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. Mayor Protem Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see there's a motion on the floor. I'm sure I'm going to support it. But I, again, wanted to thank the community members, Parks and Rec, and the Subcommittee, and Gary McCauley for their work on this. It's beautiful. I love the concept of it so much. It's just perfect. In terms of location, I think I prefer number two to number one, but I'm... What I think number three is probably out because... think number three is probably out because of the infrastructure that's there. But I do look forward to having this installed, having it be something in our community, and I'm really excited that, it sounds like we're going to have flags for this Memorial Day. That's so great. If you'll indulge me two minutes, my grandfather was an immigrant to this country, and he enlisted and fought in World War I, was very proud of that service, the 308 Army Corps of Engineers. And he always carried the American flag in the Memorial Day parade. That was his role. Everyone knew John Bando, whom the VFW Post is named after, would carry the flag in Memorial Day parade, except the year that he died on Memorial Day. And, of course, it was before phones, or, you know, real phones and internet. And the parade ended at my grandparents' house because they were like, where's John? Where's John? And that's how they all found out. So I love Memorial Day and flags. So I support this monument.
Great. Councilmember Lesser?
I see there's a motion, and obviously, I want to hear what the motion is, but just to, by way of general comments, I'm supportive of our approach towards honoring Memorial Day along with Veterans Day. It's always perplexed me how in our country, we, of course, honor our veterans, there's so many of them, but for those who've paid the ultimate sacrifice, there really has not always been the commensurate celebration, except perhaps for particularly World War I monuments in many communities which suffered the loss of so many of their young. But I think this is an appropriate approach to move forward with some sort of monument. I'm in favor of moving forward at Civic Plaza. I don't want to be too prescriptive, other than acknowledging that there are some infrastructure issues in at least one of the location. I'm in favor of the city moving forward in honoring these different holidays, the way that's being proposed here with flags. And I too want to thank the Parks and Recreation Commission and Mr. McCauley for their time in studying this and coming up with a proposal that I think will work for our community.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Napolitano?
Your Honor, if I can defer quickly to the maker of the motion so everyone can know it before they speak.
Yes, thank you. Motion is to follow the Parks and Rec Commission recommendation for memorial for the fallen and the location to be placed to be decided.
Okay. I agree with that and all the comments said. The only thing I'll add is no bronze.
Bronze. Got it. No bronze.
Simple, white, simple, well.
No bronze.
No thefts.
Okay. And I too want to thank, you know, the Parks Recreation Commission. This is going to mean so much to so many. Just on, just on Sunday night, Nancy, my wife Nancy and I went to LAX, kind of late, about 11:30 PM, and we met the Honor Flight that happens two to three times a year, where it takes veterans back from our area here and takes them back to Washington DC. And they get to, and it's Vietnam, you know, Vietnam War, Korean War. Unfortunately, the World War II vets are, you know, find it a little hard to travel. But they can go to the monument, and they actually meet up with other veterans from other parts of the, of the country. And it's just a fantastic event for them, and then upon their arrival, they're met by so many of us that thank them. It's just a simple thank you, and that's what this is, but it's poignant, it's meaningful, and I really appreciate everybody having the support for this. So on that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a thank you, Lori and Gary and anybody else that made it happen. You know, we're late to the party, it should have been done years ago, and we didn't think about it, so that's on us, but you guys fixed that error for us. So I think it's a good idea. We can discuss where it will go, they can come back later with ideas, but move it forward Memorial Day for sure. And then, I agree, Civic Plaza where it should be, Gary, it should be clogged up on Veterans Parkway, but we'll let you guys hammer that out where it will be, but that's the motion in a second from.
And then also on that motion, the, the extra flags?
Yes, extra flags should be included. It should have been done also years ago. That's on us. We should have done that years ago. We didn't do that. So glad everybody else saw that and fixed it.
And another, and we all agree that you don't put Thank You Veterans across for Memorial Day, you do that for Veterans Day.
Right.
Okay.
I just say, Your Honor, if you look at a good idea, Lori and Gary, Redondo Beach did a great job on their, on their marble. If you look at what they did there, it's kind of an idea. I'm not saying copy Redondo, I'm saying, look at what Redondo did, it's kind of a guideline for you to help you. You got pictures? Great. That's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Great. So can we have the voting screen? Thank you.
Motion passes, five zero.
I don't think I'm going to shed tears on this one. No offense.
No.
There was an expression.
Works for me. I don't know if it works for everybody else.
So, the presentation of the fiscal year 2024-25 proposed operating budget. Finance Director Shirelian.
Before Steve starts, you know, council's aware that the annual spending plan takes a lot of effort, so I want to thank Steve and Libby and Marcelo and Julie and the Finance Department for their efforts, as well as the department heads, and also our communications team of Ally, Elizabeth, and Kristin, who helped with the graphic design. So with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Shirelian tonight, as he will tell you, is an overview, and then, of course, they have their first pledge study session next Tuesday.
Thank you, Bruce. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Franklin and members of the city council. My name is Steve Shirelian, Finance Director for the city, here to present the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. I trust you've had the opportunity to obtain your green binder containing the proposed budget, which has over 400 pages of detailing next year's spending plan. And before I delve into the proposed budget overview for tonight, I want to echo some of Bruce's words. I want to extend my appreciation to the department heads and the budget leads for their efforts put forth during this budget building process and the collaborative teamwork which is evident in this proposed budget. I want to also recognize the dedicated hard work of the Finance Budget Development Team, composed of Libby Redhauer, Marcelo Serrano, and Julie Bonderchuk. Additionally, I want to thank Management Services for all their efforts on the performance measures and the Communications Team. The proposed budget book is structured into several sections. Commences with the introduction, featuring the city manager's message, fiscal outlook, and service delivery changes. The budget overview section outlines revenues, expenditures, and CIP highlights, followed by the fund summaries. Our department narratives, accomplishments, and performance measures are detailed within their respective department sections. The document concluded, concludes with the five-year forecast and the capital budget summary. Tonight's presentation offers an overview of the proposed budget. More in-depth look into the department, no changes incorporated into next year's budget will be conducted in the study session next Tuesday, 6:00 PM, in city council chambers, which is May 14th. One quick housekeeping item before we begin, the appendix section has information tables, which is starting on page 407 of your budget binder, which includes a list of department position titles. We are working on correcting some of the titles and the descriptions. These corrections will have no monetary impact, but will better reflect the changes that have occurred within each department. The budget preparation is a six-month process. We kicked that off on December 5th with all the departments. We conducted a budget priorities community meeting on February 15th, where staff presented to attendees an overview of the budget and explained the budget process for the coming year. Each department had the opportunity to outline their department functions and were able to answer community questions from the community. During the month of February, we released an online budget survey and received about 20 responses. The survey questions focused on funding priorities for the community. The top priorities of the respondents were public safety with the police and fire services, and the maintenance of streets and parking lots. The mid-year report was presented on February 20th, where we provided estimates for year end fiscal year 24, along with some personnel additions. The proposed budget is being presented tonight, and on May 14th is the budget's first study session, where we start with a five-year capital improvement plan, program presentation, followed by the proposed budget with the department presentations on their programs, performance measures, key objectives, service delivery investments, and other additions to their budget. On May 21st is a regular scheduled budget, a regular scheduled council meeting for, which there's another opportunity to talk about the budget, as well as the CIP and gets council and community input. On May 28th is budget study session number two, which is optional. Take it as necessary as we go through this process, and again, giving it another opportunity for the council and the community to provide input. Ultimately, the June 6th is our target for a public hearing for the CIP and the budget adoption.
June 6?
City council priorities of public safety and essential services are supported by the spending plan. Revenues are stable, and we are fortunate to have a good mix of property tax, sales tax, and TOT making up 67% of our general fund revenues. The city benefits from sound financial policies and maintains a AAA rating, which was reaffirmed in 2021 during our pension obligation bond process. Just to note, there's only 10%, of the cities in the state of California that are AAA rated out of 480.
It's 48.
Sorry. 480 cities in California that, and only 10% of them have a AAA rating.
58.
Overall, our financial position enables us to reinvest in infrastructure, maintenance, and service levels. Since the pandemic, the city did apply for approximately $1 million in COVID-19 expense reimbursements from FEMA. To date, we've gotten about $200,000, and we have another $116,000 in eligible reimbursements. Couple of weeks ago, we did receive information from FEMA that about $350,000 in expenditures were disqualified that we had submitted due to the fact that there were legal reimbursements as well as overtime used for the bioluminescence phenomenon.
I'm sorry, for a second. So FEMA's telling us we can't reimburse the things that happened and use our PD and fire during that time because bioluminescence was the reason, wasn't tied to COVID?
For certain things, correct.
While I'm on it, Your Honor, one second. While I'm on there, so taken out of it, how much do they owe us past that number?
$116,000.
Is all that's left?
That's, we received $200,000.
Right.
We have $116,000 pending that are confirmed eligible reimbursements.
Out of our 1 point million dollars?
About $1.2 million total, approximately.
All right. And how long, how long have we applied for that? How many months ago we applied?
We applied for that in September 15th, 2020, was our first submittal, and our last submittal was December of '21.
So time for us to call Congressman Lou and Alex Padilla and say, where's our money? Thank you.
Budget highlights and additions, vehicle replacement, including a $2 million fire engine replacement is in the spending plan, transferring about $1 million from the general fund to the CIP for project support, police SWAT rescue vehicle, as well as compliance with SB 1383, which mandate, the mandates related to Cal Recycle Climate Pollutant Reduction Strategy, as well as contract services with included CPI adjustments and some funding for citywide AI initiatives. Budget, additional budget highlights, the personnel costs are included in the MOU adjustments, also realizing the full impact of the positions approved at the mid-year February 20th budget update. In addition to four new full-time positions for this proposed budget, perma-tech in community development, which is out of the general fund, office assistant in IT, which is out of the IT fund, account specialist in finance out of the general fund, and a water systems operator in public works out of the water fund. A total citywide budget of $170 million, with the expenditures of $184 million. Citywide expenditures exceed revenues, which is typical due to capital project fund balances, and also include the operating expenditures, CIP, and debt service. The general fund proposed operating surplus of $508,000, with revenues of $99 million and expenditures of $98.5 million. General fund reserves include the financial policy of 20% of the adopted budget, which is $19.5 million, economic uncertainty reserve of $4 million that's directed by city council, and unreserved fund balance is projected to be $5.6 million at the end of fiscal year '25. General fund also, balance also has impacts from transferring out to other funds. As I mentioned, $1 million for a one-time transfer this year for the CIP fund to support projects, as well as our street lighting and landscape fund of $313,000 as a subsidy to support this program. We no longer have a storm drain transfer this year due to the successful two-step Prop 218 process. I'd be up here asking for another $2 million transfer from the general fund, so.
That's amazing.
Appreciate all the efforts on that. Transfer as a result to the unfunded pension liability policy, where a portion of the pension obligation bond assumes savings from the ramp-up cost. 40% goes in the CIP fund of 1.19 million, and then the Section 115 trust of 1.79 million, which is 60%. And the 115 trust is to pre-fund future pension costs, which will have $4.2 million at the end of fiscal year '25. Performance measure each year, staff presents performance measures for various departmental programs. The GFOA recommends that programs and service performance measures be developed and used as an important component of long-term strategic planning and decision-making. And the performance measures reflect budgetary goals, include fiscal responsibility, community engagement, safety and health of the community, and excellent municipal services. In addition to the performance measures, each city department highlights notable workload indicators and activities that have been accomplished during the prior year, which is calendar year 2023. Citywide revenues of nearly $170 million, a general fund, of course, being the largest, the $99 million, $99 million, which is 58%. And enterprise, which includes parking, water, sewer, storm drain, makes up nearly $30 million, which is another 18%. And this special revenue funds governmental, such as gas tax and Prop C, Measure R, Measure M, and Measure W, make up the other $17.6 million, or 10%, make up the majority of citywide revenues. $184 million in citywide expenditures, and these are broken down by department. Citywide expenditures are weighted towards Public Works Department, which oversees significant capital projects in the CIP fund, water fund, sewer fund, and another 42%, 42%, nearly $80 million.
Yeah.
The next largest departments are public safety, police, and fire, which make up 31% or $58 million of the citywide expenditures. General fund revenues totaling $99 million. The largest source of funds are tax revenues, such as property tax, which is our largest at 45%, followed by sales tax at 12%, transient occupancy tax, business license tax, and service charges. And some of the larger revenue producers in the category of service charges are building, and plan check, recreation programs, and ambulance fees. General fund revenues start from the upper left with property tax, remains the largest component, with $44.7 million compared to fiscal year '24 estimates. Property taxes are estimated to increase by about $1.9 million. Sales and use tax is the second-largest general fund revenue source, with about nearly 12% of the general fund, is expected to increase about $300,000 or over our '24 estimate. Our TOT revenues are expected to generate an additional $415,000 this year. The significant increase came from increasing 2% for the TOT rate from 12 to 14%. And additionally, we've seen a, a large growth in the short-term rental operating within the coastal zone, is contributing about $1 million in fiscal year '24, and expected to increase about 1.2 in 2025. That was a surprise increase in revenue for us. And business license tax is anticipated to increase by about $200,000 over 2024 projections, and we issue about 6,500 licenses annually, and historically, this revenue source has been stable for our, because of our business mix and our taxing structure. Building permits and plan check, these fees expected to increase by about $100,000 over fiscal year '24 estimate, and are based on a number of recent approved plan checks and permits in progress. We work closely with our partners in community development to measure the activity in the permits and plan check area. permits and plan check area. Parks and Recreation revenues are expected to increase by $400,000 based on high demand for Parks and Rec offerings, including recreation classes, facility reservations, swimming, tennis, and increasing popularity of pickleball. General fund expenditures, $98.5 million. This is mostly salary and benefits make up the largest portion here, general fund expenditures, about 58.7 million, 59% of the expenditures. Materials and services are about 21 million or 21%, which include contract service, contract and professional services, legal services, election costs, and departmental supplies. Salaries and benefits, along with materials and contract services, make up about 80% of the general fund expenditures. General fund expenditures by department are at 98.5 million. Again, 57% of the general fund budget is dedicated to public safety, police, and fire. The police expenditures support critical police patrol, investigations, and traffic safety. And fire department expenditures include fire operations, emergency medical services, community risk reduction, and support services. Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec and Community Development Departments make up about 19% and are supposed, and are supported by cost recovery fees and service charges. We will be bringing back, working through the departments, the cost allocation user fee study later this calendar year towards the end of the year, takes about six-month process, and we'll work through the finance subcommittee for that. And Public Works makes up 12% of the general fund expenditures. Department programs areas will be fully presented during the May 14th, next week's budget study session. General fund salaries and benefits included increasing by 3.1 million dollars. These are adjustments as per the MOU are included in this budget, proposed budget. Benefits include CalPERS, cost per current service, as well as medical and dental. We also have a vacancy rate savings built in to realize savings upfront for either one-time equipment purchases or other service delivery initiatives, which again will be discussed next week. Proposed general fund staffing adjustments of $344,251. This is for two new full-time positions in the general fund totaling 215,000. And other staffing adjustments include position upgrades and part-time adjustments totaling CalPERS current service costs are 5.3 million and our pension obligation level debt service payment in the general fund portion is 5.2 million dollars. General fund expenditures in the material and services is increasing by 1.7 million due to inflationary and CPI increases for those materials and services. Inflationary impacts to professional and contract services as well as utilities. Enhanced contract services are included for several areas, including traffic markings, tree planting, janitorial, landscaping, and park maintenance. This totals around 500,000. Additionally, a one-time contract for audit for about $65,000. This is for, to be conducted for city leases and transient occupancy tax operators. We try to do this every four to five years. The pandemic happened, so we got delayed a little bit, but we're back on track next year. Election costs were increased to accommodate the November 2024 election, as well as we're seeing legal service increasing. And the city's contribution towards our regional communications are also increasing with the RCC, which includes the INSB, by about 110,000. General fund expenditures, we are purchasing three police lieutenant vehicles per the MOU and the neighborhood for 243,930, a new police SWAT rescue vehicle for nearly 300,000, and a command vehicle for the new deputy fire chief. Also upgrades to the red house for about $75,000. Internal service charges increasing by 500, about 520,000. Insurance fund chargeouts increased due to higher insurance premiums and the IT fund, fleet fund, and the building maintenance fund chargeouts also increased due to CPI increases, materials and supplies, contract and professional services, as well as fuel cost. CalPERS pension payments, due to the volatility in CalPERS investment returns, lower than the assumed rate of 6.8%, creates an unfunded liability. In fiscal year 2021, our rate was, our return rate was 22.4%, which put the city in an overfunded status of about $30 million. Fiscal year 22, the return was negative 7.5%, which created an unfunded liability of $28 million. So it's important to keep in mind that person investment returns should not be measured short-term and looked over a long period of time, like 30 years. For example, a 20-year return average is closer to 8%. In addition to current service costs and POV level debt payment, the city has a new unfunded liability starting in '24, '25 of 1.1 million dollars. The new unfunded liability will be amortized over 20 years based on our pension policy. There's also a lag in receiving the annual report from CalPERS. For example, the 6.1 proposed rate for fiscal year 23, we won't see the official actuarial report till around August of this year. The payment of 1.1 million is allocated out of departmental programs based on their current Our estimated fund balances, the, what you see in front of you here are our financial policies, which is 20% of our adopted budget, operating expenditures, which is greater than the GFOA recommendation of 17%. And our fiscal year 25 policy designation will be 19,548,000. The expenditures for 17% of the GFOA recommendation will be closer to 16.8. So we're doing a lot better than that with the successful passage of the storm drain assessment fees increasing, the city no longer needs to dip into ongoing operations in the general fund. This next section is our economic uncertainty fund, and these are our undesignated fund balances for unreserved fund balance, and the general fund is the green. And for fiscal year 25, you will see the undes, on the unreserved for 5.6 million dollars. With that recap, we're strong revenues and balanced budget. Our essential services are maintained. Our reinvestments in infrastructure, maintenance, and services are, will continue. And our next steps is May 14th at the budget study session and the CIP presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Colleagues?
Wait for the study session. I said, I'll wait for the study session.
Oh, okay. Okay, no questions. Open it for public comments.
Any comments from staff that are the...
Seeing none here. But online?
Request on Zoom.
No, okay, closed public comments. Colleagues?
I don't want to say.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this will be the last budget for myself and Councilor Montgomery. And, you know, the city has been accused from time to time that its budget, we sit and often say, well, where is everybody? You know, why aren't they here talking about the budget? The most important exercise we go through to set the priorities for spending for the year, if not beyond. And we're accused somewhat of being performative in our asks of the public. Bring us your input. Tell us what you want to do. Because a lot of folks don't feel like they see what their suggestions are, what their wants are, needs are reflected in the budget. And to a certain extent, that's the way it's structured because we've got a lot of set things. The city is a service organization, so the most of its costs are personnel-driven. And then there are mandates from the state and federal government, there's our debt service, there's reserves, there's the cost of services just on a daily and monthly yearly basis that we go on. So there's not a lot to play with. And if you look at it, we've got, you know, we've probably run the last few years a $500,000 surplus at the end of that. And so what do you do with that? Is that all we have to play with? Generally, we try and set some aside. So, you know, all that's well and good, but I would suggest that councils start approaching this as to what our goals are. What is it that we want to achieve? We got all this day-to-day, but, you know, we're good at looking at the yearly stuff, but we're really bad at addressing multi-year, for instance, capital improvement projects. The subject of our discussion day, we don't have a necessarily sinking fund that we set aside money for on a yearly basis. It's just too tempting for some folks. That's why, you know, the bond to address our pension obligations was not hard to agree with because it's money that once we agreed to it, we couldn't then go and touch. But there's always something that someone finds, well, we'll just, you know, we'll just take that money this one time and we'll put it to this because as, and because there's always, you know, half this, this job is, yes, half of it is planned, if not less than that, and the other half is what you come across that you never expected to come across on a monthly and yearly basis and things that you want to do. I remember beyond council and the Marine Avenue Fields came up, the opportunity to buy that or Metlocks or a half dozen other things. But we really do not need to start setting goals as to what we want to set money aside for. I think there's not a lot here. I mean, frankly, we could approve this budget tonight.
I'm just kidding.
Not really, because I don't, I don't see that we're going to get a lot more input on it. And what we do get, I don't, not sure that we've planned for, but I think that we should take particular look at, you know, knowing that we're not going to approve it tonight. What we should do is take a particular and specific look at where the money's going to, that the, the stormwater money that we would otherwise have subsidized the stormwater or storm drain function with and what we're going to do, that where is that going this year? What is it going to, and is, is that placement across different departments, I'm assuming, is that placement what council wants? And are there not better purposes for, should we be setting aside for capital improvement needs? You know, what are we going to do with this money, including that 500,000 surplus? So I would take a look at that. I don't think we're going to mess with personnel. We're not talking about cutting. We're in a good financial situation. We're not going to cut positions. We could go line by line and say, which we have before, where we've been facing a fiscal uncertain future and say, well, okay, we want to see a 3% cut across departments and see what that looks like. I don't foresee that, but since we do have this, this, I'm not going to call it a surplus, but we have money to address other things with now besides the stormwater. We need to look at that and see what we really want to do and set, put that towards a goal that we see for this city and for the community and what the residents want, whether that's pool, outside dining, whatever it might be. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great. Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be as brief as my colleague was.
That was brief.
I think it's true. I am the one that guilty is charged that I, that I do make the comments frequently, that more people show up for dog park discussions than our council meeting. The meeting's about the budget, and tonight, one more example of that. Not surprising, not at all. I'd probably, we'd see more city council candidates here tonight, but as you can see, it's much too early. We're only into May, so they have done it six months and they start showing up. But that being what it is, I think our focus is just on, thanks to Steve and your team, everybody else. I mean, you wrote it to the eighth grader can follow along with your numbers, and I appreciate that. If you're watching, is it, how do you wonder what we're talking about? One of 48 cities with AAA credit rating? We didn't dip in our numbers back during COVID. We didn't dip in anything. We were lucky. We survived a lot of that. That experience is here, but we've seen it before. And I agree with Steve, looking at long rates functions and where do things go? And we're lucky compared to other cities that don't have the luxury we have to make decisions immediately or five years down the road, we stick to it. But I wasn't kidding about writing to Congressman Lou and, and as our PD and say, you want my vote? Want to earn my respect? Get us 120K you owe us from four years ago. I'm curious who the response would be, because it's not a matter of party. I don't care what party you are. If you're owed the money, you owe the money, and it's our money. So four years is no excuse. Can't wait to take four years to get back to you on something you know they owe you? Weren't they here in COVID four years ago? So I'm not giving up on that, Steve. You know, I'm stuck on that one night. I'll keep asking you because that's ridiculous. But other than that, it's a preview to what's coming down the road. Steve's right, technically, we probably could. Probably laid it out so well, we could do the budget, but there's always a last-minute wrench, Bruce, someone throws at you at the last minute. Oh, did you guys discuss this or talk about that? No, here's your chance. So if you care about the budget, care of the future of the city for a year, then this chance to put up, show up, be here, let us know what you think about it. If not, she's right, the next meeting, Steve, unless we get a wrench, I'll make that motion.
Not the workshop.
Well, two meetings from now.
Okay.
And go from there, but I'll stop there, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
I just wanted to pick up on a point made by Councilmember Napolitano with regard to the absence of a sufficient funding source for our capital improvement projects. And I guess my request of staff would be during the upcoming workshop or shops, I'd like to have just a better understanding of what a more robust capital improvement project set aside might look like. What are the options based on the realistic revenues that we expect here? Where might we have to give something up to be able to fund it? Because that has been a longtime challenge for our city, is we just don't have the funds to do the many things that I think our residents would expect and that future councils are going to want to do. And what does it look like to be able to try and fund a dedicated fund?
To your point of setting goals, you know, my wife and I are in that stage of life where hopefully, you know, hopefully the decisions we made five years ago, since we're both retired, we made the right choices or we made a choice and to set us towards the future, to have enough to do what we want to do. And that was definitely setting goals. We knew what we wanted to do. We knew what we had, and we knew we had to bridge that, that, or we had to build that bridge to, from what we had to what we want because of what we need. And so I'm, I very much echo the need for a really clear, consistent plan. And also too, that's a great idea, just take, find some things that we can take out so that we can, that will help us focus. And, you know, that's how we run our finances at home. It should be no different than running the finances for the city. So with that, do we have a motion?
We just...
Has he even filed, doesn't he?
No, it's just because we're going to do the workshop on Tuesday. We don't do anything to...
Your Honor, if I could also suggest, there was at the county a budget tool. I don't know if they still put it out, but it was very useful for folks because, right, budgets are priorities, but they're also about trade-offs. And the budget tool allowed people to add more money to certain things like police or fire, but it would also require you to take away money from other things. And so people really understand the struggle that, yeah, we all want this, but there's only, the pie is only so big. And if you take, if you want to put everything into that, that means you're taking a lot away from this. And I don't know if it's still there, but I think it's more useful than saying, just give us all you want, you know, give us all your thoughts about what you want in a budget without any implication at all as to what the trade-off would be for that.
All right. So nothing that we have to vote on, we just, okay, great. So let's go on to item L, council requests and reports, including AB 1234.
I have one, Your Honor. I attended the Southern California Association of Government SCAG Conference out in Palm Desert, not Palm Springs, Palm Desert. We actually learned what's going on in the rest of the region transportation-wise. And the highlight for me was watching what the state plans to do all around us in future, expanding freeways and...
Wow.
They're pushing forward the mileage counter, which means the more miles you drive, the more you pay. Think about that for a second. It's shocking, but I voted no on that one. And follow-up to, I'll wait for the next one. That's all I've got for this one.
Okay, great. Future agenda items.
I'll go, Your Honor. The, maybe Bruce's, the directions, the request. I've reached out to, Ali put out a great press report on AB, suddenly Bill 2309 regarding our request to prosecute local misdemeanors. 23 cities have responded in favor of supporting us moving it forward from LA County. Maybe an update at the next meeting, Your Honor, to have the, where we're status and where we are, what we've heard. Do our lobbyists too, but just, I have comments separate from our lobbyists.
We can do that, and we are working on a media release on what the next steps are.
We can do that, and we are working on a media release on what the next steps are in that process. So we can certainly report back at the 21st meeting.
Sure. I'll share back with you, the cities that have sent me a notification, they support our drive of AB 2309 Marasuchis Bill.
Great, thank you.
Good work.
Thank you for doing that.
Welcome.
Anybody else?
Got nothing.
Okay, I have one thing in regards to the Catalina Classic statue. There's an issue that has come up because they want to have a plaque on the statue that requires an ADA-compliant parking spot nearby. Unfortunately, the parking spot that was painted there does not meet the ADA slope requirement, and it's going to be an approximate cost of $18,000 and seek assistance by council to, to be paid from the A, the Art and Public Places Fund. So that's allowable.
You want to put that on the agenda?
You want a second to put on an agenda?
Yeah, second to put on.
I second it.
Okay, great. Thank you. City manager report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
No, no bombshells, no.
City attorney report?
I'm staying.
Psych.
Everybody go.
We have that closet over in that spare room you got.
We'll send out a press release tomorrow. Yeah, I have nothing either.
Okay, informational items. So our adjournment, we've got adjourned, please, yeah, you could go ahead and...
Five o'clock, May 14th.
No, I attend adjournment in honor of someone that passed away. I want to, I'll stand. Time to read it.
That's fine.
This is City Ministry Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Marcucci. Most of you don't know her. She's very active at contract cities and was, and I'll tell you more about her. It's with heavy hearts that we mourn the passing of City Ministry Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Marcucci, who died after a long battle with cancer. Kathy was a devoted member of the California Contract City Association family. She was an active member of CCA's ledge committee for many years and a champion for local control. She was. Kathy was a pillar of strength and resilience, known for unwavering termination and dedication to her community. In addition to her civic contributions, Kathy was a passionate advocate for animal welfare. Her efforts in establishing a priceless pets adoption and rescue operation in the City Ministry have left a lasting impact, benefiting animals and families throughout the region. Kathy was elected to the City Council in 2017, and stepped into mayor pro tem role in 2019. Her dedication to fostering collaboration with regional entities has simplified her commitment to excellence and governance. She focused on creating local jobs and investing in regional infrastructure and community programs. She spearheaded efforts to establish the first no-kill animal rescue in the San Gabriel Valley, leaving an enduring legacy of compassion and kindness. Through revision and termination, countless animals have found refuge in love, representing the spirit of hope that she embodied. Kathy's legacy as a compassionate leader and community champion will forever inspire us. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family, friends, and colleagues in the difficult time. She'll be deeply missed in the moment in time here.
Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. And we're going to adjourn to a close session on Tuesday, May 14th, at 5:00 PM in City Council chambers. Thank you.